Julian, we're all set?
Okay, thanks. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julian Hirsch, Chair of the Select Board. I would like to call the Select Board meeting for September 22, 2025, to order at 6:32 PM. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. It is being streamed live and recorded. Before we begin, I will state the members of the Select Board who are present in the room. We have Jacob Jones, Jonathan Ray, Mike Teigen, and Laura Zaitin, and myself. So, without further ado, the first item on the agenda is a request to consider a fortune teller license application as submitted by Paul Jeramini, doing business as Miss Fortune Tellers, for premises located at 85 Sunset Drive. Mr. Jeramini, are you -- oh, hi. Come on up. Why don't you have a seat and tell us a little bit about your business?
Well, a month ago, I learned Massachusetts issues fortune teller licenses, and I certainly wouldn't want to tell fortunes without the approval of the state, so I proceeded to get one, or at least apply for one.
And how do you train for this?
I have absolutely no training. I am interested in the historical practice of augury, which is the observation of birds to tell omens. If you're familiar with Greek and Roman mythology, it plays a lot of -- it shows up a lot in that period, so I'm really interested in that. And that's why I pledge a fortune teller license.
So this will be out of your home?
Correct.
Okay, and it looks like you have done all of the applications and whatever. I'm going to open it up for questions from the board. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Welcome. Glad you're here. I read probably the same laws you did, and I saw that, sure enough, on our fee schedule, we have a fee for this license. Interesting. My personal belief is it's probably protected speech, and there's probably not much we could do about it, whether you wanted to do it without a license or not. Far be it from me to get in your way of, you know, having the license to make sure everyone's okay with it. You know, I would say the same thing applies to this business as anyone's business applies to everyone. None of us can commit fraud on people. I don't think you have any intention to do that, and so, you know, I'm fully supportive of this.
Laura?
Have you -- so do you have any thoughts about what the traffic situation is going to look like, how many people you're expecting, like what are the hours?
I haven't done any research on any of that. I don't really know -- I sort of really haven't thought of the business side of things. I really wanted to just get the license first and then proceed with that. I honestly don't think I will do a lot of business.
So that leads to my question, which would be, do we have restrictions in town on how many clients you can see per hour? And, you know, how many -- because, you know, parking and -- oh, hi, Lori. Just in time. Can you fill us in on conditions that would apply to a home business of this nature?
No, I can text somebody.
Would you?
Muted.
Lori, we can't hear you. Oh, you are mute. There we are.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning part. Can you give me some guidance on what type of home business you're talking about?
It's -- we have a licensed fortune teller who wants to open a business on Sunset Drive.
Oh, okay. Well, there is a zoning bylaw that says that home -- actually, let me grab the zoning bylaw.
I think that there will be some situations where, you know, you can only have a certain number of cars in the -- on the street or in your driveway, and how many you can see in hours. But let's hear from Lori. She is our town planner. Okay.
That is correct. So the traffic associated with the home occupation has to be similar to that of a single-family home. So you can't have a consistent flow of traffic, and there is only a tiny sign that's allowed. I think it's like two feet by two feet. I'll have to grab my zoning bylaw to verify that. So the home occupation should not be -- have any sort of impacts to the neighborhood itself. So it should be pretty much in keeping with what you would see with a single-family home.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, so should you get really busy, you'll have to keep that in mind, okay?
Okay.
All right. So, without further ado, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the fortune teller license for Paul Jeramini, DBA, Miss Fortune Tellers, for the premises located at 85 Sunset Drive, Northborough, as submitted, subject to all standard license conditions.
Anyone second?
Second.
Second motion made by Laura, seconded by Jacob. Any further discussion? Okay, this can be a hand vote. All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda, our public information session. And would our guests like to come to the microphones? And I understand, did you want to say a few words or jump right into things?
Yes, I was going to just introduce myself and a little bit about our intentions before we took questions, if that's okay. So my name is John Royce, just like the car, no relationship to the family. So we have a company that specializes in wedding facilities. We presently have four of them. One of them is very similar to White Cliffs, which is called La Chateau. We passed out some pictures of La Chateau on a postcard, and there's some more, I think, in the lobby. And the reason for that is because the project with White Cliffs is so similar to La Chateau, we thought it was very relevant for people to see La Chateau. What it was, was a mansion that was built by J. P. Morgan, the banker, back in 1906 or '09. I think it was '09. And it was a restaurant for many, many, many years, and it was very successful until it wasn't. And when it stopped doing business, it went into disarray, and the bank came in and foreclosed on the building, because it was privately owned. And at that point, some investors bought the mortgage from the bank, and then they shopped around for someone who might want to buy it. They came to a lot of restaurateurs. It was a similar situation in White Cliffs, but White Cliffs, I think, is a little -- actually, it's in worse condition than La Chateau was in. And a lot of people looked at it, and they just felt that it was a big project. They didn't want to spend that kind of money. It's a big risk. The restaurant business in general is a big risk. And then they came, and they offered it to us, and we said, "We could do this, but we need to make it so that it's comfortable and works for our clients and what their needs are." And that is not just a beautiful mansion to have the cocktail hour, but they need a place to sit and have a nice, formal wedding reception, which is -- we offered to the town of South Salem, which is where La Chateau is, the concept of, if you will, let us put a ballroom that will seat up to 300 people attached to this mansion, based on keeping the same look as the mansion, then we could do this. And they said yes. So we did it, and that was about five years ago, and it's been very, very successful. And so based on that, when we saw White Cliffs, the bell went off that, hey, this is a very similar situation. So we did some investigating on the property size, and the town demographics, and the general area demographics, and we realized that, yes, this could be another, what we think of, La Chateau. So we -- Richard was the real estate person who found it for us. He knows us because he found us other properties before, not La Chateau, but other similar properties on our other banquet halls. So he brought me to see it. I saw it, and I said, "It really does meet all the requirements. If we can do what we did in La Chateau, it'll work, in my opinion, in Northborough." So we had chats with everybody. This isn't our first time here. Everybody knows us. They know what the concept is. I'm just kind of filling in the history of us. And so here we are, where we've talked extensively. We had open houses. We are more than available to anybody that has any questions. We have talked to, you know, people that are very familiar with the property and about doing what we want to do, and it seems like there's no big roadblocks for us to be able to do it. So here we are. We're here to talk and take questions and see what people are thinking, and comments, and answer whatever we can, and be as transparent as we can, and we think it's a great project, both for us and for the town. So that's where it is. I think Rich wants to say a few words about some of the things that we have already done.
First of all, thank you all for setting up the visitation on Friday. That was really wonderful. It was awesome to see over 250 people from the community show up. It shows the type of commitment that Northborough has, the feelings for the property. I grew up in Marlborough, so the White Cliffs is very much a part of my -- the fabric of my childhood and teenage years, so I'm glad to be a part of a project to see it come back to life again. We had discussions with the neighbors, and we have been in communication with Craig and Rhonda Webb, and told them that, once we complete this meeting here, we'll set up a time to meet with all the neighbors on that street to have further discussions with them and try to answer any questions that might be personal for them as to what is going on at the White Cliffs. So we thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I'd like to thank you for being so welcoming to us and willing to have these discussions and tours and everything, so I think we should get started with questions, comments. Usually, we open it up to the board first. So does anyone want to say anything before we open it up to the public? No?
No. I mean, I think we've all had a lot of discussion around it, both in executive session and open session, so I think it's time to hear from the public, so.
And, yeah.
I agree with that sentiment. It's like, it's not that we don't have thoughts. It's like, the five of us, and the town administrator, and our assessor, and others in the town have been talking for a while. Sometimes it's in executive session, because we're working on the town's positions. So we are all very familiar with this, and I'm anxious to hear what are the concerns of the public, so I'll close my mouth now.
Yeah, I think we all are. So let's start with people in the room. If anyone wants to come up to the microphone, if you would please, to have any comments on the project, or any questions for the team.
One quick ask, Madam Chair. Is there sort of like a general ground rule of like keeping it to maybe a couple of minutes or a few minutes or something like that?
Generally, we like to keep it to three minutes, but...
Okay. We won't be timing, necessarily, but just to be respectful of everybody, I'm sure there's a lot of people in the room and online, so.
So just a reminder, if you come up to make a comment, just state your name and address for the record, okay?
Norm Corbin, 35 Whitney Street. I was expecting tonight to have an overview of what they were doing, because honestly, I don't know what questions to ask right now. But what I would like to ask is, could you give us -- I hear things. I hear there's ideas about the gardens. I hear there are ideas about the chapel. I hear there's some pots have to come down. Could you tell us a little more about what your plan is? I think that'll help me with asking questions, and I think it might help some other people who may not be as tuned in as I've been.
Yeah. So when we first saw the building, and we looked at the site plan, and we wanted to evaluate what we need, and did the property and the existing structure, was it suitable? So we realized that we needed to put the addition on, obviously, and we realized that, you know, there's a lot of environmental issues with the existing building. We also had to figure out construction costs, because, you know, it's not like this is an endless pocketbook that we could just take care of anything. So we met with some contractors to get a feeling on what it would cost to do what we want. It was very helpful, because when we built La Chateau, I still have the plans, so I was able to go to contractors, show them the ballroom plan, because it's very similar, except the exterior of that building was a Tudor. This is a Queen Anne, they call it. So the outside will have to match the Queen Anne look, rather than the Tudor look, obviously. But other than that, the dimensions of the ballroom, with some minor tweaks, was the same. So we did speak to contractors. We got some ideas, roughly. We're still working on that, and it's okay. It's in our budget. What we did find, though, that the building is in worse shape than we thought it was in. The windows especially, we were really surprised. A lot of the windows have really deteriorated. The sills on the windows are pretty much all rotted out, and the windows, most of them are single-pane. There's a lot of windows that are missing, that aren't even in the building. So, you know, there's a lot of discussions about replacing the windows with the same look as the estate is now, which is very important to us. The look of that building is very important to us. The historic look that it was originally designed for is, we want to bring it back as close as we can, because it's just beautiful. That's what we're selling. The inside of the building, the woodwork, is in very good condition. You know, the way they built it back in those days was so substantial that it weathered all these years. And, you know, that's really one of the most saving graces for us to even do this, because the woodwork is, you know, you couldn't build that today, you couldn't pay for that, and I don't care how much money you have. It's just beautiful. So that's good. We found out that, you know, there's a lot of environmental issues. There's a lot of lead paint. There's asbestos. There's things like that, which really frightens us, because that can get very expensive. So we've done some due diligence on that. But overall, we think, with the town's help, that we can put this together in such a way that we would bring back that building as close as we can to what it is, and put the addition on, and still be financially feasible on our business plan. The last part is that, as we get these numbers in, we're trying to figure out if there's enough money left over, if the town would permit us to put a small, non-denominational kind of ceremonial building, something that looks like a chapel. So we have gardens planned in our other buildings. You can get married in the garden, and then come in and have your reception. If it's raining, what they do is, they usually get married on the dance floor, and we put up curtains around it, which looks very nice, because it's a beautiful window, but that's the alternative that brides have. If you have a building dedicated to just ceremonies, that's a big plus. So we're thinking that if we can put 2,500, 3,000 square foot, I'm not sure of the exact size, of something that looks very ceremonial on the property, which there is enough space to do, as I say, if the budget allows us, we would do that, too. So the idea is, we do 90% of our business is weddings. So the brides will come up, and we'll be able to say, "Rain or shine on your ceremony," because most ceremonies now are done on-site. We're finding that in our other places. So 60%, 70%, six out of seven brides are getting married on-site. So we have that indoor chapel, if you will. That's a big plus. So that would be something we would look at, depending on how the other numbers come. And that's pretty much the whole story.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Fran.
Hi.
Fran Backstran, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Similar to Norm, I thought that there would be a discussion on what the draft warrants are, what the actual proposed contract is. If we're going to have a smooth, seamless conversation at town meeting, if people are hearing you for the first time then, I think it's going to be more difficult to show the support that I believe the town has to move this project forward. So before, similar to Norm, before I can ask questions, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what we're proposing. I mean, obviously, I know that's in I mean, obviously, I know that's in draft form and it's still under negotiation because that's what people are going to have questions about at town meeting, not necessarily what type of bushes are going near a proposed chapel, I think.
Yeah.
But it's all good to know.
Right. So, of course, just, I think they wanted to paint the picture of how they want to bring back the mansion, which will take, I mean, a minimum of $8 million from what their numbers are looking at right now. It could be more with the environmental. The town, for lease payments, we've negotiated, of course, the first two years, they're going to be heavily constructing and preserving. So, in year one, it ranges from a rent payment of $7,000 and up to $35,000 in year five. So, $7,000, then $14,000 year two, $21,000 year three, $28,000 year four, $35,000 year five, and then years six through 10, we're going to have a 3% escalator.
It's year 11.
Escalator starts at year 11.
Oh, in year 11, I'm sorry. So, year six through 10 is $35,000 and then at year 11, it's $35,000 plus a 3% escalator. For real property taxes, that's for the building, the actual property, it will be, we're asking for a TIF to allow them to help with construction, so that's a tax incentive financing, where we would not put anything toward real estate so they wouldn't have to pay anything for real property taxes. And then in year three, they'd pay 50%. In year four, 75%. In year five, they'd pay the full amount. And then for personal property taxes, which are, you know, your restaurant furniture, your kitchen equipment, stuff like that, they would be paying $0 in year one. In year two, there'd be, we estimated with our assessor, $6,250 year three, $12,500 year four, $18,750 year five, $25,000. And then it could, you know, go above that, depends, depending on what they take in into their personal property for equipment and kitchen appliances. Land tax, currently, we're receiving $8,500 annually, just to give you a ballpark. Meals tax, that would, it could go up to around $35,000, maybe even more, from doing the estimate of the meals, we have the local meals tax in the town of Northborough, so for every meal, we get a percentage of that cost. So, that's pretty much the financial package, which we're pleased with, knowing how much they're putting into the property. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, and in year 11, they have the option to purchase. So, the first 10 years, the town would lease the property to them. And in year 11, they have the option to purchase or they have two 10-year extensions. So, it's 40 years for the lease, but it would be 60 years if they decided to keep leasing, which their intention is to purchase in year 11. We're going through a few things with the historic deed restriction. Since the town purchased the property with CPA funds, the conservation preservation funds, we have to apply a restriction on the property. So, this is in perpetuity forever, that property has to be protected, which means even the outside land around the property, the building itself. So, you know, when people question like, uh-oh, what if they buy it, you know, in year 11 and they want to sell to a CVS or something like that, it's not going to happen because everything's preserved on the inside and on the outside. So, another worst-case scenario, what happens if the building burns down? Well, if it burns down, there is no more deed restriction, but the good news is they have to sprinkle, it's not good news for them because it's very expensive, but they have to sprinkle the entire building they found out. So, let's hope there's never a fire and the building remains. So, that we're dealing with a deed restriction holder. The town owns the property right now, so it's a conflict of interest, we can't hold our own deed. And what that means is consulting firm, we're working with Historic New England right now, they go out and they make sure that the tenants are treating the property as they should, they are maintaining the property, they're keeping everything clean, there's not a junk pile of cars in the back. So, we're working with them. It's interesting that they like you to start to construct and preserve so they can photograph it and then they will say, okay, yes, we will be the holder of your deed. But right now, the intention is for them to work alongside Elegant Banquet so they know what their plans are and, you know, if it's within the scope of historic preservation. So, that has gone great. They've met Elegant Banquet, we've walked around, they inventoried every single room in the mansion and they were quite excited about it. We had to really try to, you know, knowing who they are and what properties they accept or don't accept, we had to, you know, sway them with what we had and it was easy, to tell you the truth. They were pretty impressed and they have a committee meeting October 14th. So, we'll find out, you know, what the committee says, whether or not they have interest in, you know, working with us. So, our fingers are crossed, but that is a good security, I think, for us all, that that building will be preserved. It doesn't matter who it is, even if, you know, Elegant Banquet's purchase in year 11 and they decide to sell the year after, it's in perpetuity. So, that's a good feeling. What else are we doing? God, we're doing so much. We just had the tour, so hopefully, we educated everybody. The reason why we're there is because of our special town meeting, which is November 3rd, 6:30 PM, Algonquin High School. It's very important. You look at the pros and the cons and I'm biased now because I've seen the building, you know, from years ago and how much it did deteriorate. So, I just see such opportunity that I, all I see are pros. There's, you know, there's no cons from where I'm standing.
So, will the lease be available at town meeting?
Yes, definitely. And actually, it will be online ahead of time, but right now, we're still negotiating so many parts of it that it wouldn't be, you know, it would just be giving you false information or not thorough information. But I did, I broke down the financial parts as a handout out front.
So, just to thank Madam Chair, just a follow-up because if they're leasing, we own the property, is the real property taxes really money in lieu of taxes? Because they wouldn't be paying property taxes on property they don't own.
Interesting. I asked the same question.
Well, you know, I know, and we didn't think so either, but in Massachusetts, you have to tax.
Excellent.
I know. Sorry, guys.
Imagine that, in Massachusetts.
Yeah, we're Taxucusans, so.
Is that related to the length of the lease and it almost being considered a sale?
Um, not really. We could not not tax them. The only way in the first two years, when they're getting up and going, that's when we can execute a tax incentive financing. So, the state knows, okay, you are going to collect taxes in year three because they are investing so much money into the property, you know, they're flexible in that manner.
And just to quickly add to what Stephanie had said, there's the dollars and cents of the lease agreement, the rental and the property taxes. There's also, right, other effects possibly down the road, right? We have two other town-owned buildings in the center of town. Revitalizing our downtown is also very important to the people in Northborough. So, having, you know, a successful, high-end wedding venue right down the street from downtown hopefully makes those properties maybe more attractive to an investor, to somebody who wants to come in, along with the other storefront. So, I think there's the dollars and cents of the deal, but there's possibly other good things that could happen down the road, so.
Oh, absolutely. Good point.
Susan, before Jacob, I think wanted to just add to that, to Fran's question.
Relates to the last question also, and great questions. And just so, as far as process, the select board has been accompanying our town administrator on the actual lease. We've seen the lease several times and have executive sessions about, hey, what's our next negotiating points, where we direct her and she goes to their lawyer and they come back. So, that process has happened a couple of times now. It's getting, in my opinion, really close to where I would like it to start, just so that it's easier to answer the questions by reading the document, even though there are a couple of points, whether they're major or minor, depends on your perspective, but like, there's a lot that doesn't seem to be disagreed about and there's a few things that they appear to be still working on. But I do think that even though we're not fully agreed on every dot and tittle, that we've sent it to our appropriations and finance committee in the condition that it's in, right?
Yes.
I think I saw that, so that they can start for their next meeting, also consider it at that level of granularity, which I think is important. Because like the previous comment, I don't think anyone wants to see the lease the first time on town meeting morning, you know?
Right.
Susan?
My name's Susan Sartori, 465 Green Street. First of all, I wanted to say, the open house was fabulous. About 300 people came through from your tally that you sent to all of us. And I have to say, I think 75% of them were there because they had either had a wedding, a prom, a sweet 16 party. They are so excited, the people that went through there, to see that it's going to be revitalized in much the way that they, that many people have been used to it. I think maybe 70 years that business was there doing that. So, I applaud you for coming, I'm excited, I've looked at the pamphlets from where you have your places, seems as if you do a really nice job.
Thank you.
You did say that you were looking for help from the town, and we've heard some of that through the negotiations. I'm interested in understanding better about what's going on with the CPC funding and whether or not some of those funds are going to be used to help with the elimination of that, of the banquet room. Do you have any idea of what any of that looks like at this point in time?
Not really, I don't think so. I think we're working on it.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have anything firm.
Okay.
This has been moving very quickly.
Okay.
So, a lot of those discussions are being discussed.
Okay.
But nothing has been finalized.
Okay.
But we're trying to get funds wherever we can.
I understand. I also serve on the financial planning board, where we'll be taking a look this Thursday at your lease, but I wanted to have a better understanding of the implications for some of the funds from our CPC and what we might see in our capital improvement plan. The second, the third, the second question I have for you is that, what is your timeline? I think it's important to understand, to run a business and put capital behind it. You've got some timelines and some benchmarks to meet.
Yeah. So, I just want to make one comment about all these people that have been married because I've heard the same thing. So, what we intend to do is have a night, or maybe two, depending on the response, of all the people that ever got married there.
Oh, my goodness.
That ever had a prom there. No matter what your age is, you know, we'll have a dinner. So, anybody that wants to come and see it without getting married or invited to a wedding or something, they can just come in and have a dinner. We've had so many people say that, so we figured, we're going to get a lot of response on that. So, that was that.
And then I just would like to make a comment that we may not have hotels where we could make any money from that, but we have some very nice restaurants with very nice function rooms, where I would imagine they would make a great deal of money from rehearsal dinners and welcome parties. And we've got at least 12 nail salons in town that the ladies can get all set, great home furnishing stores to buy the last-minute gift. So, I think we can see a lot of benefit for everybody here in town.
And we give our potential brides and our brides that book, a list of recommended vendors, and we try to keep it local. So, they, if they're not familiar with the area, because we really draw brides from a 20-mile radius, they'll be able to get the local people's names from what we put in the... So, on your timeline question, what we'd like to do, and I think it's very doable, is be open for the 2027 bridal season. The bridal season is just like your tax season, it's April 15th to November 15th. That's where I like to see it. So, we think in 2027, April, we should, if everything goes well, we talked to some contractors just to get a general feel, they think to build the addition will take 10 months and that gives us, you know, quite a bit of time to do renovations simultaneously on the existing building. And so, we think that's doable, depending on how fast things move.
So, we all need to keep, be mindful of the timeline.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, somewhere, currently even helping Lori Connors. Lori, are you there? Oh, she went to sleep. She's...
Yes.
Okay. No, I'm not here, sorry. Now, do you want to tell them a little bit about the grant that you're helping them with?
So, you may recall that a couple of years ago, I applied for an underutilized properties grant. So, that is a grant that is offered by Mass Development. And unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in getting that grant. So, originally, I applied for that money to pay for the design of the demolition of the 1960s additions. And the reason why we were unsuccessful in getting that grant is because we didn't have an end user at the time. So, that is a grant program that likes to fund either housing or business development. So, what they want to see is jobs at the end of the day. So, I had a conversation with the funder about this particular project and they were very excited about it because this project would result in jobs and it would also result in spin-off economic growth for various businesses in the town of Northborough. So, that grant allows us to apply for up to a million dollars for improvements to an underutilized building in the town of Northborough. So, I have committed to these folks that I would be happy to help them with grant-writing assistance and essentially do what we can as a town entity to assist them with getting those grant funds. Of course, there's no guarantee with any sort of grants, it all depends on how many applications they get and the competitiveness of the grant applications, but I am happy to do what I can to support the redevelopment of this property and its eventual use as an event venue. I'm super excited about it, I think it'll be great and I can't wait to see the finished product.
There's a hand, just so you know.
Oh, yeah. I think I said that we would take questions from the room first and then go to the audience. So, John Rappaple?
Thank you.
Where do you live?
Know where he was. John Rappaple, 105 Wesson Terrace. Since the town owns the building and will lease the building to Elegant Banquet, does prevailing wage come into play with the construction they're going to be doing?
No. Yay.
Thank you.
Yes, my understanding also from my conversation with Mass Development is that the applicant would be Elegant Banquet, it would not be the town of Northborough, even though the property is owned by the town. So, the town would not have to pay prevailing wage and neither would they.
Lori, just stick around, just because I'm going, oh, did you want to take any... Well, I was going to go into something, but were you going to call on somebody? I was going to go into something, but were you going to call on somebody?
How about we hear what Brian Ziger wants to say?
Okay.
Hi, Brian. I think we're gonna... Sorry, John.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Brian Ziger, 2 Stratton Way. First of all, I wanted to say thank you. Appreciate everybody's time and effort trying to get this project done right. And we're actually in a butter, so I actually did talk to John, the owner, last week, and I think he says all the right things, and I think he wants to do the right thing for the town. And I just want to make sure, not just saying that, but it's also documented. And I know that you guys mentioned the lease, so I want to know the process in putting the lease together and what opportunities we as a public will have to address our concerns in the lease.
So this is the first opportunity for public discussion, because when we get on the floor of special town meeting, it will be, you know, you're voting, you're voting, yes, you're casting your vote for this or not, because we can't have changes on the floor at that point. There will be a lot of, you know, right now, we're going back and forth between the town's attorney and their attorney. So we're going to have another public information session. We will get the actual lease online, and it will be highly advertised. But just to tell you a little bit more, we have, it's a triple net lease, so they would be responsible from everything to insurances, maintenance, whatever it may be. We're right now scoping out a bond performance. So basically, in the construction phase, it would be a rolling bond, just in case they decided to go off to Jamaica and not finish the plans, and we were left with a construction mess. And then there would be another bond, you know, during operations. Basically, it's like their business, and that's the way the town just wanted their hands clean of it. And we're happy to turn her over. Yeah. But you will get to see the lease.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, before we see it, will we have input into it? Because there are specific concerns that we want to make sure is addressed, and we hold them accountable and the town accountable for meeting the requirements in the lease. So we want to add our concerns documented. And while I think John's a man of his word, I want to have somewhere that's documented that all the things we talked about the other day and some more concerns in the public are addressed. And I believe the lease is the way to do that, unless there's some special issues in the special permit as well.
Madam Chair, I was actually... May I?
Yeah. Do you have a response to that?
Possibly. And actually, I appreciated the commenter's last note really quickly, that part of the contemplated process here that is actually mentioned in the current version of the lease is that there will be a special permit process, which is typically where you would find the kinds of level of detail of hours of operation, when does the music need to be turned down, or when does the music need to go inside? Or I'm sure they'll be able to address how they've addressed the music, because the La Chateau is next to a neighborhood too, and this isn't their first rodeo in trying to be a good neighbor. So but my personal take is some of those details maybe are a little too granular for the lease and more appropriate for the special use permit.
Lori, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, that was actually, thank you, Jacob, for bringing that up. That is what I wanted to mention, is that this project will be going through a special permitting process as well as site plan review. So the permitting authority, as the zoning proposal states, would be the zoning board of appeals. So a butters within 300 feet of the property will be notified via mail. There'll also be an ad placed in the newspaper for two weeks and posted online. So there will be a public hearing process. So you will be able to look at the various plans, which will be posted on the ZPA webpage, and then you will be given the opportunity to comment on pretty much everything having to do with the exterior of the building. So the parking lots, the landscaping, the lighting, the traffic circulation. We don't get into the interior of the building, but certainly you will have the opportunity to comment on hours of operation and the like. So that will happen after town meeting, and then there will be a written decision, and there will be a 20-day appeal period after that decision is filed with the town clerk. So folks will have ample opportunity to comment on all of those issues going forward.
Okay, that was it. So the special permit process is where we can put our, address our concerns and make sure it's documented.
Brian, could you repeat that? I didn't, did you hear that?
Yep. I was just making sure that I have that correct. The special permit process is where we as a butters can address our concerns and ensure that's documented. And my next follow-up to that is, how was that enforced as far as now that we have a documented process, and there's typically some rules in place that they're following, whether it's noise or hours or traffic, who enforces it?
Yes. So the building inspector is a zoning enforcement officer. So he and I will work together to ensure that the decision is followed correctly. So definitely, there will be a process and there will be oversight.
Okay. And the last question is for Elegant Banquets. I think I heard him say earlier that you're having a process or a meeting, planning to set up with us. I think, John, I heard you were...
Oh, you're saying part of the neighbors?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Elegant Banquets mentioned they were going to have a discussion.
Yeah. We're just waiting for them to reply to what they requested a meeting.
Brian, if you email me, I can, you know, get your information over to John and Rich.
Yep.
It's Stephanie Bacon.
Yep, I got you. I was going to come see you anyway.
Okay, great.
But overall, I just want to say this could be, if it's done correctly, it could be a positive to the neighborhood and the community. And like I said, I enjoyed talking to John the other day, and I think he's a man of his word. I think it's going to be, if it's done right, it's going to be a positive. So hopefully this works out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we... Mr. John Campbell, would you tell us where you live?
Hi, John Campbell, 29 Spruce Hill Drive. I just wanted to touch in further detail on a point that Susan Sartori brought up, which is prior to the Board of Select, the select board agreeing to work with you on your proposal, a project was developed in town for what we considered to be the next phase of vital protection of the building. It was voted on a town meeting and approved for monies that we expected to go toward the design of the demolition of the, we'll call them the nonhistoric portions, and the buttoning up of the building, which I sort of imagine as just plywood all over the place, you know, keeping it safe, because we didn't know what the next phase would be. But given the timeline you're talking about, have we discussed how to combine those efforts, whereas you're going to determine exactly what you would like torn down and what could be saved? And therefore, how does that work combined with what I perceive to be your new renovation and construction work, rather than us, you know, going in two separate directions? And I may be behind the curve if that's already been discussed among town staff?
Yes, that definitely was discussed with us, whether or not the design architect, you guys could just jump right in, and then they could take over the demolition portion of the project, which was their intent anyway.
Yeah, that's very perceptive on your part, because, no, it's true. It's because we thought the same thing. We were at that meeting when you allowed the allocation for that demolition.
Right.
Money to be used for demolition. So we were thinking the same thing. We went right to Stephanie, and we said, you know, is it possible that we could somehow use that money when we're ready to go? And she said, yeah.
Because then it would be no prevailing wage, you know, which is...
And Mr. Royce, if I'm not mistaken, at your original proposal, I heard you say you thought you could reuse the old kitchen and perhaps renovate it. Is that still something you might pursue rather than demolishing it?
Yeah, we think we can. We'd put a facade on it that matches the building. We wouldn't keep it in the block. But the inside of the room, as long as there's no environmental issues, the size is very good for us. It's located in the building in a really good spot. And believe it or not, those hoods that are in there are very expensive. The ancil systems will have to be replaced and cleaned and all that good stuff, but the hoods look like they're in very good shape. So we're going to try to use that room if we can. Yeah.
John, for record, just tell people that you're the chair of the CPC. That might be relevant.
I think it was completely relevant.
Yes.
I'm on the committee votes of Preservation Committee.
Thank you.
John Ray?
Just maybe. So I think Jacob mentioned, we've been talking a lot about this. So I will say no decisions have been made on CPC funds. Like, I think what you see in front of us is, you know, it took a while to get here, and there's some things that, you know, agreeing a 40- or 60-year lease is a big concession from some of the select board conversations we've had. But I would, I view this at all times, CPC money is taxpayer money. So like, I do view that as a piece of the negotiations here too. So I don't want to misrepresent that. We may, we need decisions.
Yeah, we get that. We knew that.
And if I can just chime in, you know, following on my friend John, the way I saw it and how I have presented my position in this was that there's nothing that prevents anyone in town from applying for CPC if they think that it would be an appropriate use of CPC money. We shouldn't obviously hamstring our own property from applying for that money. And my thought was, it should go through the request process and reviewed by our committee, who's good at reviewing those sorts of things. And they will accept or deny it or recommend it to the town in the normal course. And so my view was, I would rather not put my finger on the scale either to guarantee it or to prevent it from happening, but just let it go in the normal course, because anyone can make a request for CPC funding. The question is, is how good is the request compared to other requests? And that's what we have a CPC committee to deal with. So that's kind of how I was sort of like bridging the not wanting to say I guarantee, we can guarantee the CPC will fund, but I wouldn't want to get in the way of them making that application and having them review it.
Yeah, Jacob, just to be clear, I was only referring to the almost 94,000 already authorized at town meeting for the design work with regard to demolition and how that might in fact be overlapped with construction, if we can put it that way.
Yeah, we, I just don't want to give the wrong impression. We're not suggesting that we have counted on that money to be ours. We noted it was allocated. Obviously, it's going to be for the same thing that we're doing. So we thought that, you know, see if we can use the money to do what's going to be done anyway, and we would do it. There wasn't, you know, you could, you could turn around and say, well, the town's allocated, maybe the town will demolish it, then we can get it after that. But we don't want to do that. We don't want to slow down. We want to go as fast as we can. So we're here. We're flexible. We'll work with whatever, whatever anybody decides. We're okay with that.
Okay, so we have another hand up? Let's see. Tracy? Hi, Tracy. Could you state your full name and address, please?
You... The mute button, maybe?
They're on mute.
Is it not there?
Um...
It's also not true.
We can't.
Can they hear? Do they know that we can't hear them? Got to step away.
Tracy, can you maybe try again? Okay. Is there anyone else waiting in the, in the meeting room there? Dana?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments about the project?
John Campbell again. Unrelated topic, but related. When you first made your presentation, as you know, there was at least one other proposal, and there were other ideas, and many in town had envisioned multi-use at the property. I remember you saying something like, no, we're in the wedding business.
Correct.
This is what it's going to be. And I think that's wise, you know, from your perspective. But in the big picture, I wanted to ask, in the future, when you envision the entire property being built, and you're on your schedule, as you say, wedding season, there may be downtimes, if you will, in other parts of the year, have you considered and have you discussed whether organizations in town might borrow space for a meeting or a gathering, or whether you might allow public viewing certain times? That is not, would not interrupt with your normal business schedule, or not to mention staff schedule and so on, but I wondered if that would be something you'd be open to?
Sure. We're absolutely open to it. We have in La Chateau an historic room for JP Morgan and the history of when his, he actually built it for his preacher, Reverend Ransford. And so we have photos, we have letters, we have stuff that they used in a mansion they no longer use. Like, when you call the servants, they have these wooden boxes. And so we put everything we could, and we let the public come in to see that during hours that we're not using it for weddings. So, yeah, we would absolutely be open to that. I have to say, not many people come. But would we offer that? Yes. We could absolutely offer that. And for meetings, yes. It all depends on, you know, the organization and the group and what they want it for and what we have to do to do it.
Of course.
You know, that kind of stuff. But we're very, very flexible on that.
Thank you, Goodheer. You have an open mind on it.
We also, we also like to toot our horn a little bit about, we donate a full breakfast fundraiser to a charity event in the local area. And the ones that we do in our other places are normally connected with domestic violence. So we look for a women's center. I'm sure there must be one here, a big one. And we will approach them and offer them a fundraiser. So we also do that, and it's kind of, we're proud of that part. So we'll do the same thing up here.
Great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You recently had an event in Simsbury that, can you describe that? Did you open the facility to the town or something?
That's, I'll speak to that. I'm also the president of Main Street in Simsbury, and that event is our annual taste in Simsbury, where we get the best of the best restaurants. And we also have craft beer people, distillery people, and for a fee, you know, people come in, they eat, and it's a who's who of people just networking with each other, and we do it every year. And John is gracious enough, you know, we pay him a fee, but it's a much reduced fee. It's not like putting on a wedding. So and he actually was voted one of the best this year for his desserts, because we take, we've been doing this for 19, let's see, 19 years? 2009, no, sorry. Since 2009, we've been doing it. We missed two years because of COVID.
Well, congratulations.
You know, it's funny, I didn't even know that. Now I'm going to find out what dessert that was. I'm going to get a piece of that pretty quick, I'll tell you that.
Okay, we have more comments. Lisa Mazzelli.
Hello, Lisa Mazzelli, 13 Maple Street. I'm just going to ask some of the questions following up some of the other questions that were asked, but I do want to let you know that I am actually, I'm looking forward to seeing something happen up there that you'll be able to make as beautiful as possible. And hopefully, we can all be happy with the outcome. Getting there might be a little rocky. Okay, so when it comes to the kitchen, and we've talked about the kitchen staying, not staying, was my understanding that at the time that we were looking to have the registration for the historic note for the building.
Right.
And Norm probably knows this letter, because I think he sent it and then got the rejection letter back that was saying that, can you hear me all right? I don't have to be closer to the mic, I hope, that both the ballroom and the kitchen had to be removed in order to get that. So that that was something that was very specific. And once that historic denotation has happened, there are more things that you can get for it, obviously, in grants and such. But if you don't do that, then that may negate some of those grants and some of the things. So is this a set in stone decision to keep it? I mean, you could rebuild it, close to it, obviously, but...
Well, this is the first I'm hearing of it. If it makes more sense to do this and take it down and rebuild, sure, I mean, we'll do it. But, you know, right now, the most sense, without hearing what you But you know, right now, the most sense without hearing what you just said?
Right.
Was just to renovate it. But we can look into that and find out.
All right, because I mean, I think that's got the greatest asbestos in the whole area is in that kitchen, which was one of the reasons why.
Right.
I mean, it is beautiful. You walk in and go, wow, this would be great, clean it up. Why should we have to do it? But, but those things were already in place of the specifics and not made by us. That was one of the letters and I'm sure that.
And that's part of the experts we need also to tell us on the cleanup. That could determine whether we keep it or we don't keep it, but also besides the historic part. But we haven't gone that far into it yet. It's not a deal breaker.
Okay.
If it goes either way, so.
All right. Well, that's good.
I think we're going to get clarification on that question from Norm? Okay. Come on up.
Should I let Norm talk to that and then come back and?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we answer that question?
So I'm not an expert on this, but I know some of the basics. There's two things in play here. There's the preservation restriction that's, that has to happen. And then there's placing the building on the National Historic Register. They are different. They're kind of related, but they are different and they have different regulations. And I think it's, most of the people that want to put a business on the National Register do it for one reason only. That's for the state and federal tax credits. That's usually the driver for that. And that's, and in both cases, both for the National Register registration and for the, the other one.
Debt restriction?
Thank you. Both of them have to be reviewed by the Mass Historical Commission. They actually, they have to be convinced that they're appropriate. So that's just part of the puzzle that has to be plugged in. So if you want or need those tax incentives, then you definitely want to get the National Register option. But we don't need it right now because right now, the most important thing is to get the preservation restriction. You could always do the National Register at a later date, but that's what I know.
So you were present when Historic New England came through?
Yes.
What did they, did they comment on the kitchen staying or going?
I don't remember that level of detail.
No, all I know is that it would take a significant amount of time in order to follow through, to actually obtain those tax credits. And I mean, they have a pretty aggressive schedule, so I don't think, from what you said.
And that makes sense, that makes sense to you. But the only input I can say is I'm trying to get my home on the National Register and I am now into the third year. Because usually the businesses will take, they get advantage in timing than a private home. But yeah, that's, so does that help you out, Lisa?
Thank you, Norm. Okay, back to Lisa.
Okay, so I guess that's going to have to be something that you decide. I mean, it's one of the things that we, when we, we in 2016 decided to put the tax dollars toward was to preserve the land and the buildings they're on. And, and the preservation of the land and all that was, you know, part of what we thought we were investing in. So I think it's important. I think it's important to have it on the National Register and plus it's great for advertising and that sort of thing, so.
I've had some past dealings with the National Historic Register in Connecticut. And at a certain point, when there's been so many additions put onto the building, it loses the appeal to the National Historic Trust. And I personally, I feel as though that's what the White Cliffs is right now. There's a lot of additions that were just stuck on there and it's taken away the, the beauty of what the building once was.
Right, I totally agree with that. And I think that when we were having the DVBW come in and they did all the work that they did in the investigating and there's a, there's a x-ray of the whole house, all of that was done with keeping in mind that it would be on the Historic Register. Okay, so the next, some of the things that, that I would like to know is the ballroom will be relatively the same size as what's on there now? It's just not going to be the same ballroom? It's got to be renovated? I mean, the whole, that.
I'm not sure what the size of the ballroom is there now. I know what size we're looking to put in. Do you know what the size is of the?
I don't.
I just recall the plans you showed us. And it was, to me, this is a super rough back of napkin. It seemed about 20 to 30% bigger.
I would say that that's true.
Maybe.
I agree.
Recalling what you showed us.
Yeah, no, it's not the same size if that's the question. It's definitely bigger.
Okay, that's just for people to understand. When you say, you know, square footage, it helps to know that what's the biggest.
I think the square footage is roughly going to be between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet.
Oh, so that's twice as much. Okay. And knowing that when we went up there the last time to visit, there was quite a lot of cars at that point, where do you, where do you plan to put your extra parking and such? Because if you're going to have a wedding for 300 people, you have to almost consider how much you're going to need for parking, is that correct?
Absolutely. And what we've found over the years, it's incredible, is that number one, this has always been the same. Two people come to a car. So if you have 300 people, it's not 300 individual cars, it's 150. And what we're finding is many people are coming in by bus. The riding room rent the bus from the hotel, so there's probably 30% of those people come by bus. So it really brings down the parking lot. So if you have 300 people, it's probably 100, 125 cars.
So when you're looking at doing that, like I was surprised that it was so filled just with the few people that were there. So what will you think, where do you think you're going to put the additional parking?
Well, a lot of that property is roam, so you don't really see where you would put everything. If you looked at what, just the space that people have just left and the cars have kind of made it just flat? Yes, there's not enough space. But if you look at a site plan, there's plenty of space and plenty of buffer space to put a parking lot of 125, maybe 150.
Yes.
We haven't decided, but I don't think it'd be more than 150. There's also a little parking lot in the front, as you know, on the left when you pull in. We were thinking of using that for buses.
Okay.
Because, you know, they need a place to park. So use that for buses and maybe the top for 150 cars. The site seems to suit that pretty well.
Okay.
Including our garden that we need for the ceremonial area, including a very nice entrance courtyard, and including a possible non-denominational building that we're going to put up. I have to get that straight.
Okay, so, so basically, when you, when you're looking at the layout, I haven't seen the layout, so I'm.
Not fully done yet.
Yeah, okay. If you look at the way the building is now and where you put the ballroom, keeping where the ballroom is, there's a lot of land that would be northeast of the building. And there's trees and such. Of course, the neighborhood bends around the whole property.
Yeah.
So if you're looking to, are you looking to make two entrances where your cars and such can come around? Is, if your ballroom is going to kick out, it's going to take up the land from the, from the, the old building, probably close to the neighbors? Because it's not enough.
We measured it out. It's, it's probably a half again of what they have. So the ballroom they have goes out?
Mm-hmm.
And takes half of that and pull it out.
And have it that much more. So, but you probably wouldn't, would you be able to have parking right there or would you have to have a driveway to more parking?
Well, I think, the way I look at it, without having a plan where I can actually sit down and draw it out, just sort of over the thumb kind of thing. If you just walk it out on the 5,000 to 6,000 square foot piece that we're having coming out, it's about 55 square feet that comes out from the old, from the existing building. I think that the building addition is now about 30.
Okay.
So another 25 feet. So if you go another 25 feet and you stand there, what I would like to do under the back windows of the ballroom, because that, that will be the back of the ballroom. We would put a garden for ceremonial areas. So that would be maybe another 30 feet deep and then width of the back of the building. Then you would put some arboretis or something to hide the parking lot. The parking lot would be behind that.
Okay.
But until you get a land planner where it can actually do it to scale, that's, that's the way we see it, just over our thumb.
Yeah.
And then the chapel would be over more towards where the kitchen area is.
Okay.
And, you know, so you would park back there, maybe walk into the chapel. There'd be two entrances. There'd be an entrance, which is the main entrance. And then there'd be an entrance from the chapel area into the cocktail hour.
Okay.
So if you park, if you're not, if you're having a ceremony there, you just go right in and then into the reception. If you're not using the chapel, you park and then come around and go in the front door.
All right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, done some different questions.
Chair, we have another question, by the way.
Oh, well, Lisa's got the floor.
Okay, here's a good, one of the, one of my concerns is until such time as you actually sign the lease and take over the property, how, how is the town going to keep the property instead? That might go to you, Stephanie.
I mean, we are continuing to maintain the property. What's your question, Lisa? Sorry.
Well, pretty much before somebody takes ownership, like once you've had somebody walk through your home?
Yep.
And, and they know that they want your home, this is different, just for an example.
Yep.
You're, you're kind of on the line to make sure that that home is as it was when they first saw it and made the agreement and, and you want to keep it in good stead. Right now, there's an issue in there that is not in good stead. And I think it needs to be addressed because it's only going to create more problems when, if it's not.
Oh, yeah, well, we will take care of all, all of that. I mean, it's, you know, it's.
So it's our responsibility to do that.
An old building and yeah, we're, but that's why we're in the position we're in. We're not equipped, we don't have the finances. So we're putting Band-Aids over everything and that's why it's, you know, time's ticking and years have not been good to the building. So yeah, we do what we can to maintain and, but that's, that's about it we can do at this point.
All right, so what I'd like to see at some point is the list of what we would be giving and, you know, maybe applying in grant money and CPC money and the things, and I'm sure John's probably already gone down that. What, what is becoming in from the town of North Row to assist? Just, just as a numbers, a numbers thing. And, and the last two questions, I'm concerned about traffic, obviously. That's one of my bailiwick's is traffic. And once it starts to become, you know, a time issue or, you know, a safety issue, I guess would be more important, then it, I assume it's the, it's the town's responsibility as, because we leased the property. Is that correct? That wouldn't be anything to do with a triple lease.
In terms of going to MDOT and asking for what needs to go on the highway?
Yeah, anything that has to do with any help with Route 20 in that intersection area there. Because it's all, it's been a failed intersection for 35, 40 years, maybe longer.
Yeah, I mean, there was always a wedding venue there for years, so it's, I mean, it's no different. And if they needed a detail, they'd get a detail. But, you know, and of course, it's not during work hours. It's mostly over the weekend. So I, if there's an issue, I'm sure you guys know how to deal with.
Well, you know, it's, it's an interesting question. We get this all the time in our other venues. And my office is on one of the properties. So I happen to be there late on Fridays when the weddings happen and I watch the traffic and it's, it's really quite amazing. Everybody really arrives at the same time. And it's about 75 to 100 cars. They stay until 11 or midnight. At that time, there's nobody on the road. And that's on a Friday. So the biggest issue would be on the Friday coming in and they usually arrive at around 6:00. And again, it's that amount of traffic. So Saturday, they arrive at the same time, but it's a Saturday. So it's not a lot of commuters, if you will. And then at night, they leave at 11 or 12, there's nobody on the road. And they usually don't leave all at once. We've all been to weddings, right? Some people leave an hour early, so it's never really, it's, my experience is it's not a big traffic issue. And it really is those two days of the week. So it's not like a five day week traffic situation or anything like that. Not really an issue.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm trying to establish if it becomes anything?
Right.
Who is going to take up, you know?
Yeah.
The layer on that. Okay, and then finally, I just personally feel that a 30, a 60 year lease is, is just way too long. And I've said it since day one and I will say it forever. I'd rather see you buy the property sooner than later and, and then have it all to yourself and enjoy the fruits of your labor. Okay, and again, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brian, I see you have your hand up again. Can?
She's on mute. I can see is mute.
I'm good, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Ryan Ziger, Two Strang Way. So this plan with all the details, when do you expect that and what, what part of that or if everything will be presented at town meeting? That's kind of what I wanted to know.
You mean the?
Sorry, which one?
Like the, some of the design, like where the building will be located on the property and things like that?
Yep, the building, the parking, the traffic, the landscaping, all, that's part of the plan. When is that expected to be finalized? And I don't know if it'll be done by November, but what part would be presented to the rest of the town?
Well, you know, it's, it's a big commitment to go to land planners and start all this stuff. It costs, it costs us a lot of funds. We want to make sure that we have something, you know?
A commitment.
Firm, a commitment. I mean, it's going to be subject to approvals to.
ZBA.
To ZBA and everything already, so we wouldn't do it beforehand, before we got the lease. We'll, we'll be interviewing people.
Rough idea, when you present this to the town, a rough idea? Because I'm assuming while people may think it's a great idea, there's, could be some roadblocks there. I mean, you seem to have the answers to the questions, but I kind of want to see it because it could be one, one specific instance that doesn't meet people's needs, so.
Yes, Brian, and there's also contingencies. So even when we're at special town meeting, it's, of course, the lease agreement is contingent upon them getting the zoning board approval, the alcohol license from the town. So there's, you know, certain things that come after the fact. That's just the way it, it has to be. So yeah, you'll probably, I think your interest will really come in during the ZBA process where you'll get all of that information, you know, draft plans you can see, the hours and, and stuff like that. But pretty much, I mean, in a nutshell, it's, it's the building as it is now, taking off the existing ballroom, adding, you know, a newer ballroom in its place and possibly in a small accessory building for ceremonial events and meeting space.
Yeah, and I also, we have, as you have rules and regulations, we have to abide by those rules and regulations. So if you have setbacks, we intend to live in the setbacks. We can't do anything that's against already the laws that exist in town. So we're gonna, we're going to obviously stay in that range. I don't know if that helps in the sense of if you saw the codes, if it's, if it's 30 feet back from an existing property line, for instance, for parking, then we'll be 30 feet behind the, you know, whatever that rule is. So we will follow all the zoning laws and the building code laws that are required that the town has already on the books.
Chair? And so some, some of the feedback I've heard from the Butters, I mean, and I think, again, you got, I think you have a great operation, great reputation, so and every dealing, half of these been, I've been continually just consistently impressed with the, with the conversations we've had.
Thank you.
I think the Butters is something, like the comfort level, I think, what I'm hearing, not to speak for Brian, is not necessarily as much on that, but how is it going to impact the way they live in their homes? Like you're going to see lights, you're going to hear music, like what's the landscaping? And I think Brian actually pointed out to you, he's like, see it, that's my house. He pointed to his house and you could see it with the leaves down and how it could be on top. So though, like, those are the things that I, that I've heard that might be hard for people to understand from a process perspective as we lay it out?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we are very sensitive to the neighbors. We're very sensitive to sound. In all our other buildings, our windows do not. In all our other buildings, our windows do not open specifically because that's one of the reasons. Another one is we don't want the air conditioning to go out or the heating to go out. If somebody decides they're too hot or too cold, we don't want them to make that decision. We'll make it with the thermostats. The sound is the big one because sound travels. You know, you open up a door, you open up a window, and so if five windows are open, the neighbors are going to hear the music. So we unpurposely design these buildings so that the windows stay closed. We intend to do that with these windows, too. The, uh, the lighting will be, the ballroom's in the back. So the back is more facing the parking lot and the garden area, the way it's designed. So there'll be lights, we've all been to weddings. There's crazy lights to go on for dancing and things like that. But that will be contained to the back area of the, of the property. As far as the cars are concerned, coming in and out, we intend to make sure that the people, when they drive in with their headlights, that they're not going to go into Brian's windows, you know, at night. So we're going to be very aware of where we put fences on the exterior of the property to block those headlights. And it'll also help with the noise. So if there's any noise coming from the building, those fences will also help with the noise for traveling. We intend to make it soft because we want it to be a very elegant property, so there'll be some greenery in front of it. And all the greenery behind it will stay the same. We're not going to, we're not going to, you know, the greenery on the side where the houses are will stay exactly the same. So it'll be our fence and then some greenery in front for us. So, other than that, we stay within the sound regulations. You know, all the buildings, even La Chateau, which is in a residential neighborhood with houses this close. There is a, a town law on how high you can have sound coming from your backyard party. We always stay under that, you know, so, so we never, we never had any problems with any of our properties. The worst sound that you would get is maybe a harpist or a violinist during the ceremony, if it's an outside ceremony.
They're really bad at what they do.
That's about the worst. I'm sure you have neighbors that play music. It's nothing like that. And that's about the biggest sounds you hear outside.
So, John, I guess this is my whole point from the beginning. Everything you said, I, I agree with, and it sounds great. I just want to make sure, from a town perspective, from a, a resident perspective, that everything you say and everything we agree upon, that we'll have it documented and we can enforce it. Because things do change. Even the conversation earlier, somebody said, oh, can you add different meetings, can you add different events? And already you're like, yeah, sure, certainly. So it's, things can change loosely. I just want to make sure that we have it sealed tight where we, it's not going to change tremendously over the years. Because it's a long time for a lease, and it does affect us, and we are closer than you're used to at La Chateau. Our, our houses are a lot closer than those houses, so it's going to be different. And not just be lights, it could be, I've been to weddings and people act a little unruly, maybe outside and trash and things like that. There's a lot of specifics that, like I said, you're saying the right things, but I want to make sure it's documented. So that, that was my point from the beginning.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you, though, appreciate the answer, John, I don't want to.
Okay, Brian, thanks for the question.
Susan Sartori, four, six, five, Green Street. It's really a comment I want to make. I think one of the things that's so hard about this for everybody to put their head around is that normally we, we build municipal buildings, and there's a certain kind of process that goes along with that. You go to the town, you ask for feasibility study, they come back with pictures and show you, and then you, you, you vote at the next town meeting for the project, for the school, for any kind of building like that. Now, people that come and invest in our community that are business people, they go before our, you know, ZBA, our planning board, they go before our design and review that Lisa sits on, um, and there are regulations there. And there, I, I watch them, I listen to what the regulations are, they work with you, you work with them. Everybody does it, that's the process. The difference here is that you're in a unique position because you're going to be leasing the town property. And you don't want to have your designs quite yet because you don't know where you stand right now to make that investment. Because it is an expensive investment. And I just wish everybody would kind of understand the process, and that's the way it goes. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, just, just one comment. I, I certainly respect the, the questions around the length of the lease, right? Forty, fifty, sixty years is a long time, right? Most of us wouldn't be sitting here in these seats, um, you know, at, at that point. But I, I did have an opportunity to recently go to the Guinness Brewery in, in, in Ireland, in Dublin. And Sir Arthur Guinness in seventeen fifty-nine signed a nine-thousand-year. Now, that's not our, our, we didn't start there, that wasn't where we started negotiating. But, but it's worked out quite well for the, for the city of Dublin to have them there. You know, so obviously with the, you know, the amount of money and funding that you're looking to put into this property, y- you want, you know, some guarantee that, that you'll have, you know, the ability to control it for, for, you know, a, a length amount of time. You know, I think the number was like eight million roughly of, of improvements. Forgive me because I forget, of that eight, how much is the ballroom? Roughly?
Probably about four, four and a half.
Four, four and a half, okay. So that, the rest of that is all preservation, restoration of the building itself.
Fiancemental. The grounds.
Right, and that's, uh, private sector funding.
Right.
Um, I don't know if anybody here could give us a rough estimate of if we were to do that at prevailing wage, how much would that additional four, four and a half cost?
Seventeen, Scott?
Twenty times two and a half.
Two and a half.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so significant. But, yeah, uh, no, just, just, you know, th- there's a lot to digest, um, you know, a, a lot of questions out there. I think we'll, you know, be able to continue this process, especially with the Butters, get to a good place, and, and hopefully be able to move the ball down the field, so.
Yeah, and thank you for that interesting comparison. All right, do you have anything you want to ask us or say?
Well, I just want to say it's just a pleasure working with everybody, you know? It's, it's, I think it's, uh, obviously, I think it's a great opportunity for the town and us. But it's really a pleasure to come in and find a town that recognizes that. Uh, I've had that happen to me once before, and it makes life so much better when you meet with people that work in the same direction. It's a, it's, 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 it becomes fun. So I know we've been having a lot of fun putting this together and meeting people and discussing the excitement. It's, I mean, the open house was just awesome, you know? People were really, you know, upbeat and happy. And what, what we say is what we want to do. I mean, it's not that, it's no mystery what we want to do. The beauty of it is, we all know weddings, and we all know what they're like, they're very formal affairs. And White Cliffs is a very formal building, and it just fits perfectly with tuxedos and gowns and wedding gowns. You know, it's just, uh, thank God that that tradition still goes along, and, um, White Cliffs is perfect for it, so. We think it's a win-win for the town and us and everybody. It's just going to be good.
Well, and I'd like to thank you for being so receptive to our questions and our concerns. You've been really wonderful.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, and we'll be seeing more of you, I understand.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks a lot. Thanks, Stephanie, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are we excused?
Yeah.
Yes, you are. Unless you want to stay for minutes.
Stay travels.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm wrecking the place already.
Okay, so next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. And you received a correction, an amendment?
What was the question, sorry?
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. And you received, um.
Yep.
An amendment.
Yes.
So.
From Linda.
Everyone had somewhat of a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Yes, it seemed like more corrections than anything else, right?
Right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five?
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the meeting minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five as presented, um, as presented.
Second.
We have to say, as amended.
Because they're amended online?
Well, we didn't amend them at the meeting, right?
Right, okay, that's a good point, yeah. Okay, all right, and Laura seconded?
Yep.
Motion made by Mike, any discussion? Okay, this is a, um, a hands-up vote. Everyone in favor of approving the minutes? Okay.
Thank you.
Next will be, extend the closing date of the upcoming special town meeting to October ninth, twenty twenty-five? The special town meeting warrant?
Warrant, I was like, no.
To October ninth, twenty twenty-five, discussion impossible vote. So, um, Stephanie, do you want to explain why we are going to?
So part of the, um, special town meeting, meeting articles, we have the lease, which is one article. We have the, um, TIF, the Tax Incentive Financing, which is another. And the third is, um, amending the zoning because it's half residential, half, half-business right now. We're not, there were people interested in creating an overlay zone. I'm not sure if that's the best thing to do. There was, um, actually, come to find out, Elegant Banquet's attorney also brought up the fact of spot zoning. So, uh, their, their concern is, right now, again, it's, um, in the front of the property, towards Route twenty is Business East, in the back, it's residential. For myself and Lori, uh, we, we thought the most, you know, obvious thing was to, to change it to Business East. There was a question at the planning board meeting on the sixteenth, um, whether or not, you know, what if the building burns to the ground and there's no more deed restriction? Then, you know, can a big-box company come in and take over? Well, I mean, really, this, the building, let's hope it doesn't burn down, and then we, we don't have to worry about that anyway. Even if it did burn down, the planning board can work within the confines of Business East and, um, devise a special permit. So if you're over a certain square footage, you need to seek a special permit in order to get permission for your commercial business to come in. So there's, there are steps along the way. Would we have to even worry about that? I mean, I think we're all going to be dead here. I hate to sound grim, but by that time, but you, you just, you never know. So, so we could work within the confines of the Business East District so we wouldn't have to get to the point where it got passed through town, uh, special town meeting with an overlay zone, and then the Attorney General's Office has to approve that. And if they found that it's spot zoning, it's.
Back to square one.
It's bad, yeah, it's bad. We already had our special town meeting. So you want to choose a zone that is, you know, consistent in the, with all of the other zones around it, which is Business East. Of course, they're not going to rezone for the other half, which is residential, they're running a business. And, you know, there's, like Norm Corbin commented, it's been a business more than it, it's ever been a home. So it makes sense that we move it to Business East.
I have a hand up, Amy Paraski? Oh, 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 sorry. Amy, can you hold on a second? Susan.
Hi, Susan Sartori, four, six, five, Green Street. I am so confused by this discussion. I watched the planning board meeting that they had, and they sat there and they decided at the end of the evening that they were going to go forward with the business zone that you have put forward and the, the planning director also put forward. There was one member that liked the overlay zone, she ended up going along with it all, so I don't know why we're discussing this. That was a posted open meeting, has the group changed their mind somehow?
Okay, so, so, just so everyone in this, um, and me too, understands this. Business East would allow, um, hu, some housing, restaurants?
Retail, yeah.
Retail, okay.
Lori Connors, are you still on?
I am.
Oh, good, phew, okay, so tell us if we're wrong. Um, housing, retail, commercial for Business East?
So under the Business East zoning, housing would not be allowed.
Okay.
So the only housing that would be allowed is like congregate housing. So that's, um, like a, a nursing home-type situation. Assisted living would be allowed. Um, and then mixed use would be allowed. So it, it could be like first-floor retail or office with apartments above. And then there are a variety of commercial uses that would be allowed. So retail, offices, personal service are among those. In our zoning bylaw, we do have a stipulation that says that up to fifteen thousand square feet within the Business East District is allowed by right. Fifteen to twenty-five thousand square foot, uh, structures are allowed by special permit, and nothing over twenty-five thousand square feet. So I did, I do know that the concern is big-box retail. So I did look up the size of the CVS that currently exists within the downtown, and that structure is fifteen thousand, six hundred square feet. Uh, so that is something that would require a special permit, uh, from the Zoning Board of Appeals if something that large was proposed for White, the White Cliffs parcel.
So anything less than fifteen thousand feet does not require a special permit? It's by rights?
That's correct. However, if it's new construction, it would trigger site plan review as well as design review committee, uh, recommendation. Uh, so there would be that two-step permitting process. And also, it would trigger the need for a land disturbance and stormwater management permit from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, mind you, this is only if the building burns down.
Right.
No, really.
Right, if it burns down or a Russian drone strike or some, like, you know, like, then we have bigger problems.
Yes.
And, and all of that can occur.
I'm not confident in us, okay?
All right. Anti-drone systems on the Capitol. And, and all of that applies to all this blue. All, everything we just discussed. So all those things could be built right now in all these blue areas.
Oh, yes, that is.
So the area, so the frontage, and actually, I can show you, I, I do have a map that shows, uh, the current zoning of the property. We got lots of windows open, so let me see if I can find it. Let's see. All right, this isn't quite what I was intending to show, but it does the trick. So, uh, the blue in the center here denotes, uh, the Business East zoning. Um, so I have my cursor over the White Cliffs property. So you can see the blue is Business East and the yellow is Residential C District, which is primarily a single-family residential district. There are very, very few uses that are allowed, pretty much as single-family homes and duplexes by special permit. So, um, what the proposal is, is to make the entirety of this property as well as the undeveloped lot that I currently have my cursor on, Business East. So that would provide a, a variety of opportunities. Like, for example, if, uh, the Elegant Banquet's was interested in doing a gift shop or like a little museum, then that type of zoning would allow that to happen.
Okay, I'm going to allow Amy to, to, um, come into the meeting. Hi, Amy. Just, could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, Amy Paraski, forty-seven Indian Meadow Drive. Um, I also am the chair of the planning board, so I know about a little bit of the background. So we did have a planning board meeting, and there was talk about doing an overlay. Adatso, who brought it up, but the board. Adacho, who brought it up, but the board was discussing it and what came about was there's not enough time. We need this written by Monday, the warrant's closing on Monday. You know, it wasn't that we were against the overlay. There were people actually seriously interested in it on the board, but we were told there wasn't enough time. And then, then the next day, I wrote an overlay and ran it by some of the staff. So that's when we discussed, you know, should we keep the warrant open and bring it back to the planning board to see, do they want to do the overlay? Do they want to do Business East? But one thing I wanted to clear up was a statement that was made that the Attorney General would say, no, you can't have the overlay due to spot zoning. That isn't who says it. Like, we do bylaws every year and the Attorney General reads them. And I may be wrong, Jacob is a lawyer, he might know, but I think it has to be someone in the town that would say, this is spot zoning and bring up front a case. The Attorney General wouldn't say that. She would, and we already have an overlay written for one property in town a couple years ago, before my time. They wrote an overlay for Bigelow's. So say Bigelow's Farms Evercell's, there's an overlay written for that one property right now and the Attorney General didn't shoot it down. It's not something that the Attorney General would do. I think it would have to be someone who would bring it forward as a resident or a neighbor and say, oh, that's spot zoning. And they could do it for either route. They could do it for the Business East, moving the line. They could do it for the overlay. And we sent letters to town council and he, he also, you know, either way, I don't think he's the problem with going with either route.
You all have town councils?
It's highlighted in yellow.
Comments?
Yeah, so just read it and I'm, I'm afraid that it would get to the Attorney General. And for instance, we have some articles from last town meeting that have not gone through the AG's office because there's, you know, issues with the articles. So it happens all the time. You know, we actually just received an email today based on four articles that we have some issue with.
And the whole
First, when I first went to Stephanie with this idea about the overlay, it was more to have in the back pocket. Could we ask town council, say the neighbors don't like the change to Business East? And can I do a motion on the floor, an amendment of an overlay? Because really, I do want this to pass. I think this is a great opportunity. I think this is a great use for White Cliffs. I'm really excited about it. I want it to pass. But we did get, there was a petition a couple of years ago about it turning to Business East and there were like 150 residents. So if they came to this meeting and said, we didn't want it Business East, I just wanted to know, could I have an overlay in my back pocket to present at town meeting to try to save it from failing? That was my main question. And then town council did say, well, instead of having it in your back pocket, maybe you want to have both on the warrant. We did that for the marijuana. We had a warrant article that prohibited marijuana and a warrant article that zoned it. And when one of them passed, the other one we passed over. So you didn't have to do, it just was, I was hedging the bets and I just ran it by Stephanie and Lori as an idea.
Yeah.
But as of tonight, it doesn't sound like the neighbors are upset and it might be something that they could figure out when they meet with the residents. If they have a residential meeting and the residents say, no, we're totally fine with this, then I do think we have time that we just don't put it on the warrant. And maybe they're going to meet before you guys close the warrant and then all of these questions could be answered.
And I think it was a little different in the past, Amy, because we didn't have that historic deed restriction. Now we do. So, you know, that's, it changes the landscape of it all.
Fran.
Madam Chair, Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road. I think for tonight, you have in front of you three draft warrant articles and I believe you're discussing whether or not you're going to close it tonight or on October, I think on October 9th. The planning board is having another meeting on the 7th. I assume it is so that they can get in one more conversation. I know they're holding the public hearing open for that night as well. So for tonight, it's really whether you're going to close the warrant on the 9th or not. What warrant article about zoning ends up in there? I mean, the planning board, I did also listen to the meeting and the consensus was at the end of the meeting, after input from both one of the select board members and the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, that rezoning it, the entire property along the property lines at this time is the more prudent way to go forward. It has, it's the cleanest, it's the most effective. And really, the permitting process through the zoning board will ensure the concerns that the butters have can be satisfied to the best of our ability through the zoning, the special permit process with site plan approval as well as design review without the need to have an overlay for that one piece of property. And then you don't have to worry about whether it's spot zoning or not. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so, so Fran brings up a good point. Our job tonight is to vote to wait to close the warrant until October 9th after planning board's meeting.
We could do that, but before we do that, it's necessary, the select board has to schedule a meeting before October 14th. So if you can't do that, then we need to close the warrant and, and just go with Business East.
Before October 14th?
Yes, because you need to be able to close the warrant.
Close the warrant.
Yeah.
Okay, so that will be?
The planning board's already voted and recommended to go with Business East.
No.
No.
They opened, they left a meeting.
They continued it and they gave Lori the, you know, basically
A consensus to move forward.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
They gave a consensus to move forward.
May I? Was that, were those the specific words? Amy, as you recall, do you recall?
Our decision, do you hear, can you hear me?
Yep.
Our decision to move forward was based on the information we were given that a warrant, that an overlay could not be written by Monday.
Oh, I see.
But once an overlay was written by Monday, I just wanted the chance to go back and ask the board. And they might, do they still want Business East or do they want the overlay? Because there were a couple of people on the board that were considering the overlay, but, but since we couldn't write it in time, they thought that we would have to go forward with what we were given at that time. But then, yeah, but then we wrote one, so.
They had to vet it through our attorney, they had to, Elegant Banquet's had to vet it through their attorney. So there was, you know, we had, obviously, and we had to post a public hearing, meeting, which, you know.
Right, and that's already been posted, so it will happen?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I speak?
Oh, sorry.
Susan Sartori, 465 Green Street. Whether or not you elect to not close the warrant tonight is up to you. What I don't like that I watched in this past week, the Wild, Wild West here about an overlay or not. It was pretty strong words that they tasked the director of planning, the plan, of the planning board, to go forward with the four business, whatever you guys call it.
Business East?
Business East. And they were all, they all agreed, including Amy, that she would show up and write an overlay with no oversight from her committees and asking her to do so. A chairperson is not a lone ranger. A chairperson brings the function of the body together. They do not hold the power of one. The power lays in the board and that night, the board said to go with the recommendation of the, of the director of planning. I don't know how it got to the point that somebody wrote an overlay and got the town council involved. It was not at the bidding of her committee.
I'm just really afraid that, like I said, it will go to the AG's office and then what do we do? The meeting's over.
Well, and I'm trying to square, I'm, I'm not versed in municipal zoning law, right? So the argument for an overlay is to do that just in case in the next 60 years, the building burns down and somebody can't put like a Cumberland Farms there.
Correct.
But if the building burns down, something's probably going to go there, right? At some point. Hopefully the building doesn't burn down, we don't cross that bridge. But it just seems like planning for a contingency, I mean, how, how many contingencies can we plan for? Our council, their council and our town administrator's concern is that it could be seen as spot zoning, right? I'm correct in that?
Yeah, it could be challenged.
That it could be challenged, where there would be less grounds to challenge a extension of Business East.
That's already there.
That's already there.
And that's already on that parcel.
And again, all the concerns of Business East already exist all over that blue. It's just that little piece, relatively smaller piece of the whole that's going to get shaded in with blue.
Where's Route 20 on that blue?
Right here.
Okay, so it's the back of the building?
Yeah. Granted, it backs up to, to, to the housing. So I get where the butters would have a concern. I, I guess for me, I'm not sold on why we would, if, if, if the planning board went, said, okay, we're going to go with the, the, the recommendation of the, of the director, Lori Connors, and council and town administrator is all saying that this is the best way to go because of these concerns and I'm weighing it out, I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't just close the art, the, the
And if I got back a positive comment from council, I would be like, all right, that's good. We already posted just in case for a public hearing for the overlay zone. So we could essentially do it. I would have no qualms, but now I have
And the property operated essentially as Business East up until it shut down and we acquired it in 1516.
Yep. And actually, when they were rezoning in 2009, it was supposed to go to Business East and they screwed up and they, was it, yeah, you, right? Oh, no.
So, yeah, in a couple of years ago, there was also a proposal to do Business East. So
This is a dumb question.
I don't quite understand why a portion of this property was owned residential when at the time it was operating as an event venue.
In the, in the Burdow example, we still own it.
There's a, there's a non-zero, I'll put it that way. There's a non-zero, but in my opinion, highly remote possibility that sometime after they have exercised their option to buy and we no longer control the property, it'll still be subject to the historic restriction, but the argument would be it's burned down and therefore those protections, at least to some extent, may go away. That's the scenario that was presented as the what if, I think.
Makes sense.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so to, to, just to respond to your point, I, I believe that the planning board agreed that, you know, it was best to do Business East because of the time restriction. Then when it was, when Stephanie looked at the timeline and we figured out that there was a possibility of planning board meeting again to discuss the pros and cons of Business East versus overlay, that's, that's when this whole issue of extending the, you know, putting the warrant off until October 9th came up. So we have someone who would like to speak. Lisa?
Lisa Maselli, 13 Maple Street. The overlay thought came, I guess, a little bit later than when the meeting started. There was thoughts of what we could do to protect the residents that live on Stratway and, and that whole area. And it's kind of a win-win, I believe, to do an overlay. They did it at Indian Meadow. And when Indian Meadow was faced with a baseball business that was trying to go in, Amy can probably talk to it better, that their business actually wasn't able to do it because of the overlay that had been put down. So it was kind of a, and, and that was 40 years prior that it was done. So I think at, at the cost of a few weeks or a little bit of uncomfortability, that we have to consider the residents. The residents are the ones who pay the taxes. The residents are the ones who support everything that's done in this town. And I think anything that you can do to help them is a, is a win. And I think that if the overlays have been done in the past and they've been successful, that it's a much better idea than just leaving that as all business B because now we have people who deciding that maybe business B could be everything, could be industrial, could be commercial. There's a lot of things that are starting to come up with that, that down the road, again, we're not going to be here. And I think our responsibility is to make sure that whatever can be done to, to protect and to protect the land should be done. Just because when that development was built, it was built in mind with that unit where the, you know, yes, it was a wedding, but it was back in the day, right? Well, 2012 was the last wedding that they had there, I bet, or reception. So it was more quiet back then in that time and the land, you know, didn't have as much activity because it was so many years ago. So I don't think that overlay is, is outrageous. I think it's already been written as a matter of fact. And, and as a, you know, as Amy felt strongly about it being the chairman and also being a resident, that she really recommended doing that and I think we should think about it. Thank you.
John?
So what I'm hearing, overlay not desirable in the sense that doesn't fit our timeline. Is that accurate?
So could you repeat that?
What I'm hearing is the overlay is not desirable because it doesn't fit our timeline for time meeting, right? The overlay complicates things? Is that accurate?
It will fit the timeline if we agree to an extra meeting to close the warrant, to allow the warrant to stay open for planning board to meet and discuss.
Okay. So the other thing I'd be interested in is if we just clarify the language in the option of purchase and maybe addressed it that way and it's such subject to whatever we need to do from, from a zoning perspective, where we, we're open to that as part of the agreement, but not taking on unintended risk?
But that would be a lease with Elegant Banquet. So if they, you know, again, if the building burns down, if they decide to sell or if they decide to build something in Business East, then, you know, so we just don't know how, with that many years down the line, what could happen. But to Lisa's point, we can protect through Business East. So the planning board could work on protective measures for Business East because Business East, as you can see, is in residential areas, but it's also along a busy Route 20 corridor. So there are things we can do to protect, but again, there's a deed restriction. That house will not be touched forever until, God forbid, it burns down again.
I'm sorry, Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Just a couple of things. Again, an overlay district is not going to give you any more protection than a well-done special permit with site plan approval and design review recommendations. Overlay districts are usually intended to expand on the use of the land, not restrict it. So the use of it in this case, again, and as somebody who sat on the zoning board for nine years and actually understand the regulations pretty well, it doesn't, it's an unnecessary step and that's what our professional town planner is telling us and then the legal opinion that it's a better cleaner way of going. And then just one other point, because the first application I sat on at the Zoning Board of Appeals was the baseball that wanted to go into the Indian Meadows. There is no overlay district. They were denied the special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals because it was a non-conforming pre-existing use that was going to be more detrimental to the budding neighbors and that's why it didn't get passed. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Amy.
Hi, Amy again. Yeah, I, I was part of the Indian Meadow Golf Course term and I agree, it was not an overlay, but there was written in the deed, a restriction, should the golf course not exist in the future, it would revert back to course not exist in the future, it would revert back to residential. So, that, that was one of the things that we brought up at the time with the non-conforming use, is there was something in the 1955 that protected the residents that said, should this not exist anymore, it reverts back to residential. And so, that was one thing. I also wanted to speak to Susan Satori, who spoke strongly. My reasoning for wanting the next planning board meeting was to run it by the planning board. It wasn't for me to do it all on my own and try to force this down anyone's throats. I was actually trying to see, as I said, if the overlay would work on town meeting floor, should there be people against rezoning to Business East. That was my main original, the beginning of running the overlay, because I do want it to pass. And we did not vote it on as a planning board to move forward.
Yeah. Thank you, Amy.
There's one more hand there, but I do have a comment.
Lori, is your hand up?
It says one other.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out, right before this meeting, a couple of hours ago, we received something from the Attorney General's office that struck an aspect of our new accessory dwelling bylaw that had to do with water service connections and sewer service extensions, sewer services to accessory dwellings. So, I did just wanna point out that it is the Attorney General's purview to strike down bylaws and aspects of bylaws that they deem to be illegal. And I know of a variety of circumstances where they have done so. So, I am concerned about the Attorney General striking down an overlay because they believe it would be spot zoning, and then we'd be back to the beginning. So, if they were to strike down that bylaw, then we would go back to residential C zoning for the building portion of the White Cliffs property.
Which is residential?
Residential C, so then we'd be back to only allowing single-family homes and duplexes and a couple of institutional uses only.
Um, you said there was someone else?
Scott Rogers.
Oh, Scott Rogers. Scott, would you like to offer a comment?
Yes, thank you. Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive. I think my comments probably echo that of Board Member Tejan. I think you have a recommendation from our planning director on the best way to go, a recommendation from town council on the best way to go, a recommendation from town administration on the best way to go to put together a package that will work for special town meeting. I'm concerned of having one member of a board use a weekend to draft something up. I'm worried about the quality of what's written by one board member and not having gone then through further review and edits from the rest of the board, from the planning director, and from legal counsel. I think if you want to be successful, and I think everybody does, in having a good disposition of the White Cliffs property, then you need to heed the recommendations of the professionals that have been working on this for so long, and not try to make a change at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I just, I just wanna say, I don't think it was one, you know, Amy did state that she wants to bring this back to the board after finding out that they could have more discussion in the timeline that we're working with. John Rappa, did you wanna come up?
If I may, as a follow-up, just to clarify a point, you're still talking about the planning board reviewing the work of a single individual. They're not gonna have the time to adjust and correct and improve a homework assignment.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to speak to that if I'm, if I'm still available to.
Okay.
With the planning board, I mean, we had a couple of weeks. We went, I asked it to go in front of town council and staff. I'm not saying we have to go this way, but it is the same. We have other overlays in our zoning book. I followed the same criteria that we had. It was like A through D, or A through G. It really wasn't that difficult to do. And it, there would be enough time to run it by town staff and town council before the meeting. So, it just wasn't my weekend homework assignment. And I'm just, I was actually just trying to make sure we covered all our bases.
Thank you. John?
John Rappa, 105 Wesson Terrace. There's no Plan C here, folks. We've gone through a couple of iterations to where we are with this. It's like, you're gonna be on the 18th green, the ball's in the hole, look backwards. It's a lot of moving parts with this. Do the right thing. Let common sense prevail. That's all I have to say.
So, once again, I'd like to point out that our job tonight is to either extend closing the warrant to October 9th, in which case that means an extra meeting for us to allow the planning board to further discuss overlay versus Business East. Am I stating that correctly and clearly?
Yes, but you also have to think logically if it's worth extending time to bring it to the planning board. I mean, my concerns still are the AG's office because of this letter. So, I mean, that's the decision you have to make. If you decide to do that, great. If you don't, then, you know.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay. Jacob has had his hand up for a while.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Appreciate all the comments. I was at this meeting. I'm our liaison to the planning board, so I try to do my best to follow along with their meetings. So, I listened to it. I saw what happened, and I understand the logic of what happened. What I'm, what I'm hearing, I am open, I don't necessarily know if I know whether one solution or the other is the best. I think potentially in a world, either of them could work. We recall back in May-ish, June, when we were first talking about this, I was one of the first ones to say, hey, guys, the parcel's half-residential. We're gonna need to do something about that. And we had discussions about that, and we had thought about, what about a use variance? And we discussed, use variance, not a great route. We discussed, maybe we didn't discuss because it was such a bad idea, but I had said, well, what if we adjust what's allowed in RC? That was immediately shot down as Jacob's bad idea. I probably shot it down myself. And, but when we were having that really helpful brainstorming process where we came up with the, oh, just rezone the rest of it Business East, which made sense, our planner thought it made sense, we all thought it would make sense, I thought it made sense. At those moments, I never even contemplated overlay was an option. And so, I hadn't thought about overlay as an option. I hadn't excluded overlay as an option. Even today, now that I've had the weekend to think about it, I'm kinda 50/50. I'm leading a little bit toward, it looks like there is a little more risk of singling out a single parcel for an overlay versus what we're doing with the zoning. So, I'm like, I'm thinking, still the zoning makes more sense, the zoning change. But here's where I come down. What I saw in the planning board meeting was not just one member, there was a lot of concerns, but what the consensus was, was there's this artificial timeline. And if we would've thought about, we, meaning the collective, we, whoever we is, had thought about overlay as an option a month or two earlier, we wouldn't be panicking or calling it the wild, wild west. We would be doing a thoughtful process through that. And we may have ultimately come to a conclusion where, eh, considering the two options, fully, Business East is still the one we recommend. But what I heard from the planning board was, we don't have the chance to do that because the select board has a deadline of Monday. And therefore, because of the select board's deadline of Monday, we can't really even evaluate it. And so, I look at the planning board's elected officials, just like this board is. I don't want the reason for our co-equal elected officials to say, we didn't do an actual evaluation of whether we recommend one or the other because the select board gave us an artificial deadline. I'd like to give them the opportunity to think it out and then go from there. They may, I'm not telling them what to do. They may say, now having this additional information, having been thoughtful of it, let's go the original recommended route. Maybe I'm personally hopeful that that's what they do. But I don't think there's any harm in being respectful to our co-equal elected officials to give them a little more time to think about something that we all wish we would've thought about earlier. I didn't think about it earlier. No one on this table thought about it earlier. Kicking myself for not thinking about it earlier. There's some considerations really quickly. The retail establishment, if they do a retail subject to the square footage limitations that are in the footnote, doesn't require special permit if it's within the square footage. So, we wouldn't have that protection. Cumberland Farms couldn't go because that's a no. Gas stations are a no in Business East, just so we know there's no worries about Cumberland or any other fuel station going there. But I certainly understand the concerns that were raised. And I'm more worried about giving the due respect to our co-equal board, the planning board. And I, and I think it's a little harsh to say, an elected official who was elected by her peers to be the chair chalked this up to a homework assignment. I think she did a diligent job, in my opinion, of trying to be conscientious of concerns that certainly some of our residents have. And I applaud her for doing that. And I think it takes a lot of courage, even if it does seem a little disruptive. I also wanna say thank you very much to Stephanie, to our TA, and to our planner for taking the steps to take those concerns seriously. And I know it's a lot of work that they did to get there. So, my, my two cents is, I would say, let's give them the extra time to duly consider it. And maybe I'll say, I'm hopeful that they just say, let's go the original route. You know?
Well put. Okay. Hand, no hands up. So, we have, are we ready for a motion?
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So, what would be the date for the second meeting that we would have to put in?
Right.
I just wanna make sure that's an availability.
I had October 6th in my head for some reason. Did we not?
October 6th?
I thought their meeting's not until...
They're meeting October 7th.
Oh.
So, that's the problem.
Oh, I see.
So, you guys have to meet before October 14th.
Between, which we're planning to meet on the 6th. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, but their meeting's not until...
So, I'm saying, so between the 6th and the 14th, another meeting, right?
No, between the 8th and the 14th. Yeah.
That's what I mean. So, just an additional comment, you know, and it seems like, right, from the professionals, planning, town administrator, council, that doing the overlay would inject some additional level of risk.
Yes.
And that that additional level of risk would be to provide some additional, possible additional protections to the, how many abutters is there? 14? About? So, but it ejects additional risk into the process. And I think finishing a positive disposition of this property is good for the, based, if this is right, what I'm looking at, like 5,900 other households in Northborough. I understand, and I wanna be sensitive to the concerns, and, and wanna address as best we can the concerns of the abutters. But we're responsible to everybody else who lives in this town. To me, injecting an additional level of risk going against the advice of the professionals and our professional staff is not worth it. To get an additional discussion by the planning board, where there was some consensus to move forward, maybe because of timing, but we're already now trying to scramble a little bit with timing. I'm, if we make a motion and vote on it, I'm a no. I think we should close it this evening, because I don't, I don't see the, enough positive to outweigh the injection of this additional risk. And that's all I'll say.
Lori, do you have your, oh, Lori, you have your hand up?
I think it's Amy.
Amy?
I don't.
Okay.
Amy does. It's Amy. It's Amy. Now, I just wanna state for the record that I did go forward as the chair to see if an overlay could be done, because I felt it was a concern of the planning board. And I wanted to see if it could be done. And when we found out timing-wise it could work, I was, I did wanna go back to the board. I do feel like town council said it could be more of a risk than the other, both of them could be a risk.
Right.
Maybe this one's a little bit more. But I just wanna say that tonight, I would say I would go with the Business East, but I don't wanna speak for the planning board again. You know, I feel like the planning board didn't go forward with the overlay because there wasn't time. But I feel like it's not my, as a sole person, I can't say tonight, I think you should go forward with the Business East as, as the chair, because I really feel that I'm not trying to speak for the board.
Right. And Amy, I don't, I think you're operating from a place of good faith. And I think you're, I'm not questioning your motives or anything like that. I'm just saying, okay, here's what I've got in front of me, and I have to make a decision as a member of the select board. And I'm gonna say, this is my decision after I've weighed everything. And, you know, that's why we're gonna take a vote to see how we all decide. But, but yeah, Amy, I'm not trying to doubt your, your operate, you're operating in good faith, just like everybody else is. It's just take in the information, make a judgment, and let's, let's move forward. So, I'm comfortable with...
Right.
With closing that.
So, the, the extra meeting after October 9th.
It would have to be, yeah, between the 8th and the 14th.
That's Wednesday, the 8th, Thursday, the 9th. Friday's a half, well, because town halls close.
13th is a holiday.
Yeah. And 13th, Columbus, Columbus.
So, we're thinking Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. Right?
Could it be a Zoom meeting? Can we do it via Zoom? Or do we have to be in person to sign it?
Yeah, you could do it via Zoom.
So, if we moved our meeting on the 6th to like the 8th or the 9th?
Well, the, in the agenda, it says...
We have to do the 6th because we already have people scheduled to come in.
So, we'll do the 6th and the 9th?
A Thursday?
So, what you're saying is, what's written on the agenda, extend the closing date of the warrant to October 9th, that is flexible. It could be 8, 9, 10.
I'm available the 9th.
Don't forget, we only need a quorum, right?
I can do the 9th.
I can do the 9th.
You're available?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes? Are you available?
I'm trying to look at a couple different calendars.
And right now, I could do in person, but there's a possibility I might have a work event that I'd have to be on Zoom.
Sure. And that would just be a one, one thing on the agenda to close the warrant, correct?
Actually, since we're having a meeting, can we do executive session for collective bargaining purposes?
Sure.
I feel like we just got this.
Why not? We love those.
You, you do them a lot.
I know.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. It'd be nice to get that solved or updated.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion? And is there a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm to take this motion if there's a motion. Now, procedurally...
If you don't wanna go for it, I can move for it for you if you...
Yeah, go for it.
I can do it.
Yeah.
I move the board vote to extend the closing date for the upcoming special town meeting warrant from today to October 9th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Laura, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
No.
John?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we will see what planning board, what, what they discuss. Okay, great. Moving on. Okay, so next is a proclamation for the 152nd Northborough High School reunion. So, I guess we have to vote on...
Can I make a motion?
On doing that. I, you all saw the proclamation and signed it already. So, is there any, are any questions or discussion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the board vote to sign the proclamation recognizing October 11, 2025, as homecoming day in honor of the 152nd Northborough High School reunion, as requested by the Northborough High School Alumni Association.
Second.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Any further discussion?
I was going to say, congratulations to the Northborough High School Alumni Association. They are the oldest one in the country, and it's an honor to be able to give this proclamation every year.
That's fantastic. Okay, once more, all in favor, hands up, please. Okay, motion passes. All right, now, next on the agenda. Next on the agenda is stated to consider and potentially vote on a warrant article at the special town meeting to reduce the fire station building appropriation to reflect bid savings of approximately $6.5 million, or to take other related actions, such as requiring select board approval before any bid savings are used for additional protections. So I'm going to ask you, Jacob, since you are our liaison on the fire station building committee, to explain this.
Not on behalf of them, I'm sure they'll tell you, just on behalf of myself, I'm the one who requested this. I do want to pivot a little bit. It was originally drafted when we were getting the agenda out to meet the deadline as a possible warrant article, and some proposed language was submitted there. Obviously, as everyone knows, we have a deadline for agendas to get them on so that we can talk about them. As everyone here knows, I had mentioned in our last meeting that I did intend to do this, so hopefully it's not coming as a surprise to anyone here, because I said I'd do it. But I have had a few good conversations that have been really helpful, including one of them, just in particular to call out from our finance director, who through those discussions, I thought maybe a better way to accomplish what I'm doing, and let me just pause there. What I would like to accomplish with what I've done, what I've suggested, is that we lock in, for the benefit of the Northborough taxpayer, approximately 6 point, there's an exact number, it's roughly $6,469,800 of what's called bid savings, as essentially permanent savings. That's what I'd like, and I think the taxpayers would like. So what does that refer to? That refers to the difference between...
It was like 42 million initially.
Right. So the numbers that were presented at the town meeting where the town voted for this project, it was based on estimates that were provided by professionals we hired to do the estimates. After that approval, as the law requires us to do, we went out to the public to bid and followed all the applicable laws to do that. Good news, we should all be excited about this, the general contractor bid that ended up being accepted resulted in a savings from what we had estimated those services and construction to be about 6.5, a little less than 6.5 million less than what we were anticipating when we approved it at town meeting. And so I thought that was really good news, and in order to eliminate perhaps the temptation to find other ways to spend that money, that we took it off the table. Originally, I was thinking, let's just have the town meeting, go ahead and do that. And I've, I thought that, you know, this town meeting's really about White Cliffs, and I think maybe be a little more prudent to do this in a different way. So having talked to our finance director, it was pointed out to me that since our town administrator ultimately has final authority for approving any expenses with respect to the town's property, that may be an alternative thing for us to consider, which is why I amended the article, the, excuse me, the agenda item, or I asked for the agenda item to be amended, is that we consider voting to direct our town administrator to segregate that amount as a separate line item of the project budget, and further, and I can say this in the motion, but I want discussion first, and I'm sure there's folks here who want to talk about it, and further direct her that that, that those dollars can't get spent without first bringing it to this body, the select board. That's what I would think would be an appropriate additional protection for that 6.5 million. Now, I want to point out, before I turn it over, and I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion about it, this doesn't touch the contingency. Our professionals advised the size of our contingency for this project, which is in the $3 to $4 million total. This 6.5 million is totally separate from that contingency, which we still have, we're still nibbling on because of too many oversized boulders that we're finding and other normal things that happen in a big project, that you have unexpected things, which is why you have a contingency. So I'm in no way suggesting not having our contingency, which we still have and would continue to have under my proposal. My concern is when money is available to spend, people find a way to spend it. And I don't think the taxpayers want us to spend the 6.5 if we can avoid it.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, I guess, few concerns that I have is, one, on the previous vote for the, whether or not to close the special town meeting warrant, we kicked it back so that planning board can meet as a group and come back with another thought or more deliberation and to come back to the select board. From my understanding, asking some questions through email, this has not been brought before the fire station building committee, and they have not had any discussion on it. So, to me, it seems completely opposite to what we all just, or what we voted on, or what some of the arguments were to kick the warrant article down the road a little bit, and not have this seeming regular order would come from the committee itself if they thought it was warranted or needed.
But they're an advisory committee. As Jacob pointed out, planning board is an elected board.
Right, yeah, there's differences.
Yeah. And our job is to oversee...
But on top of that, in the packet, like, this is all I've got. This is all we've got to work on. There's nothing from the committee, from any professional staff, from anyone else, saying, this is a good idea, from the OPM, from anyone saying, this is a good idea and this is why. This is not a good idea and this is why. Like, we're making a decision just based on this in a, in an agenda that's, most of it is now all crossed out. So I, one, didn't think we got enough information to even frankly put this on the agenda, let alone have a vote for it. You know, I had to go out after being, seeing it was on the agenda late Friday night, and start sending emails to town staff to figure out, like, what is this a good idea or not? Like, what does this mean? Like, what happens? If it's town meeting, if it's something different. My understanding is that the only amount of money that's been authorized is the 31.5, 31 million-ish?
That we borrowed.
That's the bar, that's what we've borrowed.
We authorized 42 million.
That's what's been borrowed. Right, okay, I'll use correct language, my apologies.
But we borrowed, so if we were to borrow anymore, it would come back to you guys anyway.
Right. So, so if it's coming back to us and to you as town administrator, because we oversee you, then what, what is this? Like, why, like, to me, this kind of says we don't trust the recommendation of the building committee, nor our town administrator. Like, I guess, what is this doing that regular order doesn't already give us?
From what I understand, it's just, you know, additional eyes on how we're spending the money. It's human nature, if there's, you know, if there's money, oh, let's, you know, maybe let's do this. Jacob, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, no, I didn't ask the OPM what they thought, because I assumed the OPM would not want this. Part of this is precisely because we need a separate layer, in my opinion, us, to be another layer of oversight. And ultimately, we are the layer of oversight, we've just, the town administrator, a prior town administrator, appointed an advisory board who makes recommendations to the town administrator. We assume usually the town administrator would follow those recommendations. There hasn't been a case so far where the town administrator hasn't followed, that I know of, the recommendations of the FSBC. I could cite examples, and it wasn't really my purpose to do that, of reasons why I don't, why I would like to have that layer of trust. For, I'm not talking even about the remaining contingency that we have, which we're going through the ordinary course with change orders, approving them. I've voted to approve several of them so far. So I'm happy to get into details of why I like the additional comfort of requiring us to get eyes on it before we touch the bid savings. I think the taxpayer would like to have some comfort that we are recognizing, hey, we saved $6.5 million. There's a good chance, because we've got good people, including the folks who are already looking at it, we've got additional layer of people looking at it, it'll be really hard to spend that $6.5 million. Is there a scenario we can contemplate where we may need to do that? Sure, we can all invent those scenarios. But our professionals said the 3 to 4 million contingency is enough contingency for this project. The further the project gets along, the less contingency you should need, not the more contingency you should need. So I would like to, and I think I'm speaking for a lot of taxpayers, do the best we can to lock in savings that frankly we got because our estimators were bad. I mean, I'll just say it that way.
And I'll just say, I mean, a project of this size and scope, and the amount of money we're talking about, see a lot of bad and disgovernance, and just to make sure that, another sort of eyes are, but the governance piece of it has an opportunity to just make sure that we're doing everything we can for residents.
It's a lot of money to save.
I'm sorry.
It's a lot of money to save.
A lot of money to save, yes.
So, if I may, just to clarify a couple things, the project, the bid savings, is in a separate line already. I sent that out to Jacob. So it is in a separate line already. In order for us to spend one penny of that, it has to come back to this board anyway. So what is being proposed is already the current situation. The current situation is, it's in a separate line. Jacob said he wants it in a separate line, that's where it is. I don't want them to be able to expend it unless they come back here. That's kind of the way it is now. We can't spend it unless we come back here, because it's already been, it hasn't been borrowed. So both of those exist already. I think it's crucial to understand the owner's project manager, yes, he's against it. And he's strongly against it, because there's a lot of unknowns still, such as tariffs, which we have no idea, because that keeps waffling back and forth. Okay, so that's a concern. I asked him about the contingencies, and he said they were very conservative on the contingencies. So they kept them low, not high. I just think it's critical, as Mr. Teigen said, that you get the information from everyone. You get it from the OPM, you get it from our finance director. And don't forget, the OPM is who we hire to watch our dollars. That's why we hire that person, to watch over what's happening, to make sure we're not spending money we shouldn't, to make sure we're not doing foolish things, which they have already on several very big occasions. So I just think it's important to understand all the facts, that's all I'm trying to say.
Thank you. John?
If I can, while Mr. Rapp is hopping up, I just wanted to...
Yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, go ahead. Oh, I wanted to say, I don't, I hope, really hope no one's surprised by this. You can watch the replay of our last meeting. I literally said, I'm going to be doing this, and here's why.
You did.
Watch the end of the meeting, so no one should be surprised. I just wanted to say that. And I did, by the way, just for the record, reach out individually to some individuals, including to the chief, to let him know what I was doing and what the reasons for it were. So it's not that this was done without consulting.
John Rapp, a chair of the financial planning committee. There are significant controls on this project. There are no less than eight pairs of eyeballs that look at every invoice coming in before it gets paid. Goes through the chief, the OPM, HKT, the architects, Colliers, the, excuse me, Collins, the general contractor, Scott Sharpton here. There's no less than eight sets of eyes that look at every invoice coming in on this. There is transparency, there is a process, there is governance. That just didn't get put into place yesterday. If you listen to these meetings, we meet once, the committee meets once a month now for project status, financial status, et cetera, you'll hear that. That'll be there. It is there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my thought out. Maybe I need to have some inspiration first.
Fran Baxter, 76 Edo Road. Well, I guess, given what the chief has said, and what I believe Steph had said, is, do you still have concern not having the, I mean, I'm not in favor at all of it going back to town meeting to have it clawed back. It's too early in the process to do anything that doesn't leave it in a line item by itself, right? But the, or, in the highlighted area, which is, or it goes back to the town administrator and the select board to reallocate. If that's already happening, how does that not satisfy what your concerns are, which are legitimate?
May I?
Oh, please.
Yeah, so I'll be actually very specific. One very specific fact. In around April, the FSBC, and I believe it was our prior member who was on there who brought it up, and the FSBC voted in favor of this, voted to instruct the OPM to put it out as a separate line item. It's in the meeting minutes. You can check it out. That was all done. I'm happy that that was all done. What I was a little bit unhappy with was that when I got the one-page financial report at our last FSBC meeting, do you want to know, wasn't broken out as a single line item? The bid savings, they were added to the contingency. And so, could have been an accident, absolutely could have been an accident. Given the amount of attention and importance of this project, I'd like to see accidents like that not happen. And that's the first step on the line of steps that, because of the passage of time, the fading of memories, the changing of personnel, that we could get 12 months from now and we're not remembering these conversations, and suddenly we feel like it's a much better idea to spend the 6.5 million. I'm just saying today, for the benefit of future me and future residents, of us looking back at this moment, I'd like to make it very clear that that money doesn't get spent without our approval, which it sounds like that, if I heard the chief correctly, he's not against, because he thinks that that's already the case, in which case there's no harm in us voting to just say that today.
But Jacob, as our liaison to the building committee, did you bring up that concern to them? Like, was this voiced in a meeting?
No, it came to, as, so I was got, I was given that sheet during the meeting. And it didn't occur to me to raise it at the meeting, because we were receiving a lot of information. And of course, I can't deliberate with them in between meetings, so, no, I did not.
John?
Madam Chair, I'd like to have you circulate this. The second to last item here breaks out the bid savings under the contingency section.
Correct.
This is the August 5th report. It's there.
So, whatever I saw, it felt to me like it was combined together, and I understand that, what my understanding was, was that they went back and broke it back out to be more clear. And maybe it's just a matter of its Excel rows that are collapsed together for simplicity to fit it on a page.
That's exactly, that's exactly what happened.
I'm not trying to...
It was simply printed out without the second two lines. That's all that happened.
Sure. And so that's the explanation, great. But what I'm hearing is there isn't, no one actually seems to disagree that this board should have the authority before any of that 6.5 million. I'm not talking about the other contingency that I think the current process is working for, which is, change order is needed, depending on the size of it, it's, you know, they have procedures. Goes to the FSBC, FSBC looks at it, considers it, recommends it or doesn't recommend it, and it goes to our town administrator and our finance director, and ultimately, they are the ones that signed the contract. But for the 6.5, I just want to make a clear record, and that's why I'd like to make the motion once we're done hearing all the feedback, to do what it sounds like some people are saying already is the case, in which case there's no harm in making the motion.
Susan Sartori, 465 Green Street. I would love to understand the process that actually takes place right now, and what the difference is between the process that you follow now to what you're asking for. What is the difference going to be?
So the diff, can I?
Yeah, please.
So what I envision the difference is, the difference is the same process. The question is, is the timing, and have we expended the rest of the contingency? Because the process as it exists today would exist exactly the same unless and until we expended the rest of the contingency. Does that make sense, which is shown on the document?
No, because I thought you had to approve as things were being spent.
No, so I'm not really sure where that came from. This board, tell me if I'm wrong, members of this board, this board has not approved a single expenditure on the fire station project so far, right?
No.
We authorized the borrowing.
Yeah, borrowing.
We authorized the borrowing, but...
So in order to borrow more than the 31 and a half, then in dib, get into the 6.4 million bid savings, you would need to make another vote, because you have to borrow more.
Right, to borrow it. Right, to borrow additionally or have money forwarded.
Correct.
I may be using the wrong term.
Yeah, yeah.
But advanced.
Yes.
In order to do that. We'd be voting on it either way.
Oh, yeah. Either way, you would be voting on it.
I do have a question, because the chief said that it was based, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go.
My concern is that this spending is happening right now, and you said that the uncertainty of the tariffs are why you want to keep that additional money.
I think that's one of the reasons, yeah.
But when we originally approved this, we didn't know that tariffs were going to happen. This was before town meeting. And I think making a decision now based on the fact that the, the economics of this have changed outside of what we knew back then, I think it's in our best interest to, to, to make sure that that savings is happening. And then if it is a tariff-related issue, we need to come back and address that separately because this is new information. This is not from the original amount. The tariffs came about after we knew there was a saving. So if tariffs weren't on the table, would you be okay with what Jacob is proposing?
No.
And why not?
Because there's too many unknowns. It's.
But that's the purpose.
And I, and I tell you that because of all the people I've spoken with, when I've spoken with the owner's project manager, I've spoken with the general contractor, I've spoken with the, with the finance director. There's too many unknowns right now to make that decision at this point in time because the point is, it's already there. The money, the process that you're talking about is already there. I'm not quite sure. So, so that would lead me to think there's another reason for this vote. If the process is already there.
For me, it's fiscally responsible.
But it's, it's already there, Laura.
But it's already there, but you're using a change in our global world as a justification for that additional money.
Why are you voting on the same process again? Do we, do we do that often? Does this board often vote on something?
It's a six and a half.
We're going to do this, it's, the money, it's, the process is the same. It doesn't matter. I just don't understand. I get the feeling that there's another reason for it. That's the only reason I'm saying. And I think it's, I think you could, if something happened, could you cripple this project and leave it sitting half-done? Yep, you could.
That's not my intention.
Um, no, it's not your intention. I understand that. I'm just telling you, that's a possibility. And I'm only telling you that because that's, I, I'm not a contractor. I'm not a general contractor. I'm not an owner's project manager. I'm not an architect. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just reiterating to you what I've been told. And maybe it would be a good idea, if this is what you want to do, we have a meeting Wednesday night. Mr. Jones can bring this up. You can not talk about it today. You already have another meeting scheduled that you're going to talk about this stuff. Bring it to the meeting, bring it to the Fire Station Building Committee Wednesday night, talk to the owner's project manager, get their opinion and our opinion, and then come back and present your same thing to this group. Then you can make a decision, an informed decision, on what they say. Would that make sense?
I guess we have the contingency in place for those unexpected expenses. The savings of six and a half million dollars is separate from the contingency.
Could you address what I just said?
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, so why wouldn't that be the, what's the harm? What's the harm in, in, in Mr. Jones coming back on Wednesday night, because it's already scheduled, bringing this up, asking his questions, and then coming back on? It was good enough for the Warren article. Coming back on the ninth, and you guys making a decision then, based on what everyone says.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Kind of.
Okay, one at a time, please.
Sorry.
I'm just trying to explain the rationale.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Behind my point.
Listen, okay, earlier I said the wild, wild west. This isn't quite that. But what's happening here is that we, we had a contentious vote over a fire station and a pretty expensive project. And the people in town did come out and they voted for it. There are a lot of people that want to watch the money very carefully. I think there's some mistrust that has grown over time. And I think that some people here are thinking that this might be a good measure to have the confidence of the townspeople. What I wished that you would look at this for is, how do we all work more cooperatively together? You want it to be a transparent committee that communicated effectively with people. Yes, I saw Jacob. It was the last three minutes of a four-hour meeting. I don't think there are many people in town staying up as late as I do to watch these meetings. Sorry, guys.
Thank you, though.
I think I would love to have more dialogue about this before you take a vote on it because there's going to be resentments being harbored. We want to work together. We want to bring this project in under budget and on time. And we've, you did, some of you, vote the members of that board, of the building committee. So you, you do understand who you put on that, that committee, and you had trust in them. I hope that you would consider talking with your finance boards, talk to the building committee. I wish you had before you put this on the agenda. And please consider just pushing it off for a time so that more people can chime in and have an opinion about what, about it. But I understand about saving the money. I do. I get it.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, bottom line, if this is already a policy that has to happen, what, what is the harm in just taking a formal vote and making sure that we all understand that, that anything that, that is used from the 6.5 million will come before us in a timely fashion, I would hope, not.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to amend this language to include the following. In the case of project overruns in excess of 34 million, 895,000, 192 dollars, such cost overruns will be borne jointly and individually and paid for by the members of the select board as follows. 80% by Jacob Jones and Jonathan Ray, 20% by Julian Hirsch, Michael Teigen, and Laura Zieten.
Point of order, I don't think someone can, this is our meeting. We make motions, so. And I don't know what the point of this.
Well.
If you hadn't included me, I would have so moved.
I know the point your motion was to begin with, so what the heck, you know?
Appreciate the feedback.
May I?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think, thank you for that. But motions have to come from the board.
May I just make a small point? I'm never going to apologize for trying to protect six and a half million dollars of taxpayer money. Period. I haven't heard yet today from any of the folks who took time out of their life to come oppose this, why it's a bad idea, other than somehow thinking that there's some ulterior motive. There is no ulterior motive. I'd like to protect the taxpayers' dollars. That's the headline. Evil Select Board Jones wants to protect six and a half million dollars of taxpayer money. That's the headline of this article. No one has said why it's a bad idea to let the select board have authority over that. In fact, it's been said that they already do. So what is the objection?
Because doing this comes across as a vote of no confidence in the current process to the people who were appointed on that committee, to the town administrator, in our normal process. You know, our people attack former members of the board for going rogue or freelancing. It kind of comes across a little bit that way. The fact that it wasn't brought to a, a, a meeting where maybe something could have been clarified or cleared up, or maybe gained some agreement that, yeah, the board thinks we could do some language in the, in the, in the idea of holding hands and singing kumbaya. Here's something that the board can, the building committee can get behind, that, oh, we have that in our packet, that they agree with it. That's great. Again, all we were given was this. Nothing official from, from, from accounting, from the, from the building committee, from the chief, from anybody. You know, I, I make, I want to, on the agenda next meeting, to make a motion to fire the coach and the defensive coordinator of the New York Giants. Like, should that be on there?
Second.
There you go.
I don't think we have authority over them, though. That's a big difference.
Right. But I'm saying, like, so it was said at the end of a meeting, now it's automatically on the agenda. There, there needs to be more than this. And, and, you know, it, it does come across that it's sort of the performative to a certain extent, and seems like the continuing, and I'll use this word, but insurgency against the fire station. That there's people that are still mad that the town approved it. The town said that is money well-spent. We got a great bid savings. The savings is there. It doesn't go away. The, the, the money hasn't been borrowed. It's not a slush fund if it's not there, right? They need to come back to us to get that additional money anyway. This just comes across as a voice or vote of no confidence to the people who are part of that process. And again, just comes across as, what's another way to, 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 to mess with the fire station? That's how it comes across.
That's not what I'm doing.
All right. So, thank you for that. I'm going to go to Dawn. But in the meantime, can you possibly find that statement from Jason Little?
I can read it right here.
Okay. Let's go with Dawn first.
Jason's right here.
Oh, hi, Jason. If you'd like to be your own. But Dawn has the floor, okay? Dawn Rand?
Jason can do that first.
Oh, I was just, I was just going to say, I, I think we're, we're no longer talking about a proposed article, are we, at town, town meeting?
No.
Correct.
That was the very first thing I wanted to clarify.
So the, what I had talked about at the point was, on a surface, it appears to be a harmless thing. We have the savings. The bids came in. Well, there's a healthy amount of contingency in the project. So in theory, it should be fine, but it's an element of risk. If, if we were to go forward and reduce the appropriation to town meeting, we're no longer talking about that, and I understand that. So I won't continue talking about the element of risk of taking it out of everybody's hands to make a decision and grind the project to a halt if something monumental were to arise and you would need to access the part of the budget that was the bid savings. The, the nature of our conversations were, where there were some elements of control. There's, there's a lot of oversight that goes on this project. The building committee recommends payments, recommends change orders. The executive action is taken by the administrator under, through policy of, of the select board. So there are already controls in place to access this money. We were very careful not to borrow too much upfront so that taxpayers wouldn't pay if we came to, like, realize these bid savings and, and kept them in the project and borrowed from them upfront. We were very careful to borrow less than we knew we were going to need. So the general process for borrowing more money or accessing more money before we sign change orders that would access beyond the cash that we have in the fund to, to pay the bills, would be to come to the board and ask for an advance in lieu of borrowing before we would undertake a borrowing. So there would be multiple points at which this board in more public venues would be discussing the status of the budget. So that's the nature of my comments. It's, it's element of risk. So I wouldn't recommend the article, and I think it's good to discuss it. So we all work very closely together. And, you know, I think, I think it's important to discuss the, the, the process and, and have people understand that we are, have a high degree of oversight over the, the bills that get paid and looking at contracts and making those decisions and whether we have funds available to sign contracts and so forth.
Mr. Little, would you take a quick question, possibly?
Sure.
Generally, with your experience in the work you do, would you agree that, as a general proposition, costs can be more likely to increase or met with less resistance when there isn't a hard limit to constrain them?
Yes. I, I, I agree with that statement in general.
General.
You know, not, 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 not impugning anybody in person, but that's just a general economic concept, that if there's not a hard limit, then the, the, costs tend to be met with less resistance.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I think everything, anyone who runs a household budget understands. And so the idea is make the constraints a little more tight so that when people are making decisions about what is necessary, they consider that, gee, to get to that point, we'll need to go to the select board. And if, again, what I'm hearing is, it's already that way, I don't understand why we're up in arms about it. So which is a, I'd love to move the mo, make the motion, and let's go.
We have one more person who'd like to speak. Dawn?
Dawn Rand, 234A Church Street, Osprey, Mass. I want to look at the bunch of you newbies and say, you're all very young and new to this job. I've been doing this over 50, almost 60 years now. I just want to say, I've never, ever frivolously spent money. And I don't believe anybody that's on that committee would ever frivolously spend money. And I do have to take to heart what Mike said because I do take it to heart that it's, oh, the money's going to be there and you're just going to spend it. I resent that accusation or the idea that I would do that or anybody on that board would. So I appreciate your time. The constraints are already there. I know that you will respect them, and should we have problems, I'm sure you'll help us by releasing the money that's going to be necessary. But on behalf of the committee that I work with, I want to say, nobody is looking at this money as frivolous money that we're going to spend just because we have it, Mr. Jones.
And once again, I don't think anyone suggested that, that this was done for any reason other than to save the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Reardon?
Oh, Tom Reardon. Hi, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Tom Reardon, 7 Sunset Drive. I am also a member of the Fire Station Building Committee, and I just wanted to reassure the select board that all the members of the Fire Station Building Committee are as concerned as you are about costs. The project architects are concerned about costs. The owner's rep is concerned about costs. We are all working together to preserve that savings. So I want to assure you that we will continue for the next year, year and a half, to deliver a quality building, and we will preserve those costs. And there is no unseen hand working against that goal. But thank you for the deliberation.
Thank you. Susan?
Susan Sartori, 465 Green Street. Just, I'd like to understand, if you do vote on this and you approve it, what is the process? Is there an added process now? What is this going to look like? Will it, will it hold up the project? Have you talked out the logistics, the mechanics of what this means?
Can I? I actually would suggest it would speed up the project. We meet more often than the FSBC meets. So if there became an issue, we would be able to address it faster.
And how would you know about this problem? How, what mechanics do you use to bring it to this board? You as the liaison or the member to the Fire Station Building Committee, or you're asking the fire chief to do it? Before you vote on it tonight, make a process that we all feel comfortable with it. I think that's what you really ought to do. I think if you want to cooperate and collaborate with your advisory boards to see what kind of suggestions they could make, that seem as if they're realistic things to, ways to do it. But I think you need a process, not just a vote.
You know, just one last comment, Madam Chair. I don't think we need the gentleman fortune teller who we approved the license for to, to see how the vote would probably go, right, once the motion's made. But we're meeting again on the 6th, and then again on the 9th, and Fire Station Building Committee is meeting, when, Chief?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night. What, what is the harm in, like, the White Cliffs zoning piece, to let this be discussed by the Fire Station Building Committee at their Wednesday night meeting? We could get, we could watch that, see maybe there's more people that agree with Mr. Jones than, than we think, who aren't in charge, or, you know, or, or, aren't voting, or whatever, terminology. But, you know, what, what's the harm in letting them discuss it? We could view that discussion, and then you're probably going to pass it anyway at the next meeting. But we at least gave them sort of the respect that I think they're due to at least discuss it before we take, seemingly take something away that's already there. I, I, kind of what we're arguing about is in a circle. But, I mean, what, what's the harm in just punting this to our next meeting, which we've done for many other things?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't understand.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from John, but I'm actually tending to agree with that one. But if John has something to say.
Go for it, Jack. No, I just, I mean, I mean, from what I've heard tonight, it's like, we are operating it, the chief described a process, that sounds like that's how we're operating it now. I mean, that's when I, when I heard him speak, that's, but formalizing it, I think, has a lot of value in order to make sure that a project this size and scope, and we're going to get a great fire station. This isn't to say we're not going to have a great fire station, but let's put the right structure in place to ensure that we're doing it at, with the right appropriate amount of attention in the process.
Yeah. So, I mean, out of respect for my, my friend Michael here, I, the reason for the timing was, my, the original idea was, the way to do this was to lock it in through reducing the appropriation, which is what the original agenda item was written out of. I was, you know, got that there as soon as I could. I was, you know, got that there as soon as I could to get it on this agenda, I was, before that, thinking about what could be done. I had reached out to some individuals who had some good ideas, one of which was Jason, which made me think, maybe we don't need to do it as that, but the reason for it needing to be on today's was because at the time I did it, today was the day to get something on the warrant article, so if you needed to get it on the warrant, today was the day to do it, so, that not being my concern now, I'm happy to move to table this item to our next meeting.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
Yeah, so I moved to table this agenda item to our next meeting, whenever the chair would like to put it.
Is there a second? Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Laura, how do you vote? Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jacob? And I vote aye. Thank you very much. That was, I have to say for myself, I cleared up a lot of things, and I look forward to more discussion. Okay, so, next on the agenda is... Reports. Let's see. Stephanie!
Oh, okay. All right, let's see. White Cliffs, we had a great tour, thanks so much to the staff that were there, the select board, financial planning, some appropriation committee members, Norm, Tom, Bob, everyone's awesome, Kaylee, community advocate, and Spectrum News. St. Obane, TIF negotiations are ongoing, meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the 23rd, so that's tomorrow, Julian, we're gonna have a little meeting with them by Teams, and then they're coming in 10-6 to discuss a new TIF structure. Let's see, they also were awarded $195,000 from the Commonwealth Economic Assistance Coordinating Council.
Steph, quick question on that?
Yeah.
Did we participate in that all, to help them get that $195?
Yep, exactly. The town had to support this move and work with them as one of our local businesses, and so, Kevin Kuros, who you had all met through the Economic Development Forum, we had, yep, I worked with him, and we just found out last week that they were awarded over a webinar, so that's good, at least they have some tax credits. We are doing a Boo Row Business Stroll, October 23rd through the 30th, so basically, businesses that want to participate, just email Angie in my office, there's a link right online, just go onto our town webpage. So, this will get the public, and we haven't put it out to the public yet, but we're just getting all the businesses, a lot of businesses have signed on, so they're gonna have candy, this way, they're getting exposure, they're gonna be given, participants will be given a list of the businesses that are participating, and, yeah, so it's just a great way to see what businesses are out there. Let's see, I spoke at the Corridor 9, 495 Regional Chamber on September 11th, and we had some good conversation about, you know, White Cliffs, about our plans for Four West Main, the existing fire station, what we're gonna do with that, I spoke about the Boo Row for Business Stroll, and Karen was nice enough to distribute the flyer, so all of our Northboro businesses would be able to participate.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, can I ask a question? So, Corridor 9 is only gonna give that to the Corridor 9 businesses, correct? Because she doesn't have the other businesses in town that are not part of the corridor?
Yeah, so, we reached out, we had a whole list through our, you know, town clerk's office, our health department, we had people from Plaza businesses distributing, yep, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get the number.
I really like the idea behind that.
Yeah, it's good. I did it in Holden, and it was amazing how many people said, I didn't know that business existed, and then, you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, let's see, I attended the 915 Appropriations Committee, they had some great questions on White Cliffs, so, we worked through that, participated in a sidewalk at the fire station, they're coming along, they're, you know, you'll see the footprint and all of the rebar, and pretty soon, they're gonna be sculpting walls, they're going to do a model of what the building will look like, so you can see the exterior and window, so it'll be just like this small little, they use it for testing purposes, so they can, you know, hose down the material and see if it withstands certain pressures and elements like weather. Let's see, I met with the Historic District Commission meeting, we talked about White Cliffs, that was good on 917, I was a judge at the Apple Fest Bake Off, which was delicious. Twist my arm, I'll do it again. Assessor, our fiscal year 2026 revale has received preliminary certification from the Mass Department of Revenue, and basically, that means they confirm that we met all the requirements, and the next step is, they have to post, post the values to the public for review, and then they, then we can look at final certification, so we're, we're very close. Spark, former Motel 6 on Route 9 is nearing completion, 90 West Main Street, which had been scheduled for auction, was, is now being listed to the open market, that's what we were talking about, 144 and 150 West Main Street, that's still in progress. DPW Road Paving, Washburn Street, Lancaster Road, Sawyer Road, Prospect Street, Mulberry Lane, and Pleasant Street Extension, beginning, it began on September 4th, and it's going to be, going through the next few weeks. ARPA Sidewalk Construction has started, work continues this week, and is scheduled to be completed soon. Let's see.
Do you have a quick question?
Yeah.
On, I know, I don't wanna open up things as a report, but on Maple Street, I know it's somewhere in the, looking at environmental impacts and things, and it's not exactly a timeline set for that, but I think, I know this board would want to just emphasize moving Maple Street forward.
Okay, yep. Yes.
Right?
I had Maple Street on here, that's funny. I'll probably come across it. Truck Exclusion Update, Lincoln Street and Pleasant Street Traffic Safety Committee will consider this at their October 14th meeting, after which DOT will be requested to move forward. The crosswalk RRFB installation runs concurrent with sidewalk construction, so that's in process.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Trying to not be, did we get any contract savings up by any chance with the contractor? I know we were told 30,000 per, times eight, any chance of improvement on that price?
Oh, Scott.
It's okay, you can just, to do, check if we can improve the price on those, would make Mr. Jones really, really happy.
Right.
He's not free.
It's not about me, but, you know, I just thought that was really expensive.
No, yep, it is. Let's see, Engine 1 should be delivered by the end of October for fire. Northboro Media Connection posted progress videos, time lapse updates of construction, so be sure to check the website. Health and Human Services, free Narcan training Tuesday, tomorrow, at 6:00 PM at the library. We have a couple of flu clinics at Algonquin Saturday, October 4th, from 9:00 to 12:00, with DPW assistance, and at the Town Hall, October 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and then 4:00 to 6:00. And then, we're even offering at-home flu vax for those unable to attend the clinic. September is National Suicide Prevention Month, Northboro residents ages 18 and older are invited to attend a free QPR Suicide Prevention Training on Tuesday, September 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the library. It's often called the CPR of mental health, it teaches participants to recognize warning signs of suicide, ask appropriate questions, encourage someone to seek help and have supporting We met Patrick, our new media assistant, he's currently training with Dana, and he has six years in the business, managing live and recorded media systems, so welcome, Patrick. All right. Woo-hoo. Moment to brag, Northboro Media Connection is a huge asset, they have 2,600 videos, if you guys want to check those out, yes. My, my silly little tour, 5,300 hits.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Oh, it's over 6,000?
I will take autographs after this.
You get the cable, Emmy.
A little embarrassing, but I'm proud, I'm proud at the same time. Okay, let's see, yes, Dog Park Ribbon Cutting, Friday, September 26th, at 11:00 AM. That D-CAM property, if you remember, the 5.45 acre, sold for 550,000, which kind of shocked me, because we had a larger amount of land than Westboro side, and they, they were like 1.5 million.
It's an awkward, awkward lot.
The Westbrows?
Ours.
Yeah.
It's a triangle.
Yeah.
It's the one by Dell Web, right?
Yes.
So, do we have the buyer?
No, we don't know yet, and Lori, I asked Lori Connor, she doesn't know either, as of yet, but we'll find out, obviously, they're going to be coming knocking. Oh, Jacob, 126 Maple Street, right?
The ZBA one?
Yeah, so, that, the public hearing is September 23rd for that, and they're thinking it might likely close.
Yeah, so that's tomorrow, there was a lot of, it seemed like, positive feed, I'll get to my reports when it's my turn, sorry.
Yeah, so it's a single-family home.
Three.
Yeah, three, single-family homes, right, but they're sharing a septic system.
A navel?
Yeah.
Yeah. Lori announced a tree planting project is scheduled for October 9th, with a rain day of October 10th, there will be 20 volunteers to plant trees for 20 interested residents, 10 trees on public property. Chief Griffin...
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Are you looking for, is she looking for volunteers for tree planting?
Sure.
Should we contact, just her?
Yeah, that'd be great, yep, just in case.
I know there's a lot of kids looking for community service hours.
Oh, good, okay, that's a great idea.
What was the date again?
That's October 9th, and then the 10th, if there's rain.
Okay, what time?
It doesn't say, so I will...
That's a long weekend, isn't it?
Oh, sugar, I think you're right, yep.
I'm away that weekend.
Is there any room for any trees at the police station?
I'm not...
We are putting two over there from here.
Oh, super.
Because, I know, they didn't have any anymore.
Yeah, just a thought.
The Chief Griffin, the police chief, reported Chris Carlton was attending a leadership conference in Texas on a scholarship he was awarded, so that was good, for dispatching servicing. Regarding speed signs, the chief has been working with a vendor and went out with them last week onsite to make some adjustments, three out of the four signs are now working. Oh, who wanted, oh, yes.
Not still?
Yep, the sign on North Gate is still being worked on, as it has had some issues. Recreation will be sponsoring the first outdoor Bollywood concert on September 27th at the Gonk Amphitheater at the high school, and I guess this is wildly popular, like, people want this, I think it's amazing. So, it'll be a ton of music, some will be in English, some will be, you know, in Indian, but it, there'll be lots of dancing and fun, and, yeah, I think it's really cool. So, hopefully, everyone dresses up, too. Let's see, Senior Center Trunk or Treat Event at the Senior Center, October 21st, 4:30 PM, that's always successful. Veteran Services Habitat for Humanity, Metro West Greeter Worcester is offering a veteran-preferred affordable homeownership opportunity at 11 Gibbs Street, Unit 20B Worcester. Application deadline has been extended to November 11th, veterans receive primary preference. For all of those interested, on how to apply, look on the Central Mass Veterans District Facebook page. The reminder, Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Dinner is on September 28th at 5:30 PM at the American Legion, this dinner is open to all veterans, not just those who served in the Vietnam War. And that is all I have for right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Jason, Jacob, I think we should go with you.
Yeah, you hit the main one, the ZBA, right now, it's tomorrow, if anyone wants to go, there was some indication about wanting to come prepared with a draft decision that they would hammer out the details of at the meeting. I'm not a fortune teller, but I'd say there's a good...
You know a guy.
There's a good, the odds are good that they'll close the meeting, which then triggers a deadline for them to reach a decision on that one. So, that's the ZBA Planning Board, I think we heard plenty of the report from the last Planning Board meeting, but they're busy, working hard, appreciate them. I did, I missed my meeting for the council on aging, and I apologize for them, but I did have a visit to the Senior Center, and I met with some folks there. I know one of the need that keeps coming up with several of them is they would like an additional staff member relating to janitor services, kind of just conveying that, I'm sure you probably heard that.
Yeah.
What other things?
They had a good lunch in there, too.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I went and had the lunch there.
I was too full.
It was eight bucks for a nice, pretty good thing, which is cheaper than my normal routine for that, I won't say where I go for nine bucks. Great people there, and our calendar has all the events that they're, that they have there, there's a whole lot that's supported through the friends of the Senior Center, that may got their name wrong, but, a lot that's supported them, by them, but yeah, there's a lot of stuff on our, on our calendar every day, of things that they're doing there.
They have an Elvis impersonator.
They do, that's sold out.
I know, yeah, it's crazy.
So, that's that, and I'm drawing a blank on anything else, that's, thanks.
Thank you. John?
Madam, anything to report?
Right.
Yeah, so, I was able to attend the Apple Fest Gala last Friday, which was a lot of fun, thank you NEF for, for putting on a great event, you know, some, some dancing and a couple of beverages, luckily, Northboro Media was not there, there was a community advocate.
Your dance moves are...
Evidence that I'm aware of. I was able to attend the, you know, we were able to march in the Apple Fest Parade, along with my, my colleagues, you know, Chairwoman Hirsch, and John and Jacob, so that was a good time, handing out candy and waving to people who, half of which have no idea who I am.
The candy man.
And I fall behind the sign, and then they're like, whatever. But, yeah, you know, just, just great thanks, I was able to enjoy, you know, my, my pumpkin beer, my Autumn Harvest, which was, which was great, in the designated area, I didn't, I didn't wander.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it was, you know, just, just thanks go out to all those who planned and executed Apple Fest and all the events, and to our police, fire, and DPW for staffing and securing everyone's good time, so...
Yeah, Michelle Gillespie said, that, she's like, your staff was phenomenal, like, everything was so smooth this year, there was not a hiccup.
Yeah, and the crowd, it was a huge crowd, too.
Right, right, so, thank you very much, staff.
I was able to attend the Northboro 9/11 Ceremony, which was at the fire station, so it was an honor to be able to attend that, have the opportunity to speak and share the podium with men like Chief Griffin, Chief Parenti, and Deputy Chief Asfisi, that who all did a great job in what they said. And then, for the Peaslee School Committee, we'll have a meeting coming up, next full committee meeting will be October the 7th, so, that should be a busy week for me. So, that's, that's upcoming, and I saw, speaking of the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, I saw the one was finished, installed at the Lincoln Street School recently, you know, the, the principal, parents, staff, all expressed gratitude for that new technology making the crossing of Lincoln Street safer, you know, and especially the day they installed it, there was a PTO event at Lincoln Street, so it went late, it got dark, there were people, like, walking home, and then you hit that button, and then wham, those spotlights come on.
Oh, that's awesome.
Wow, it's, it's really bright, you know, so hopefully, makes that, that crosswalk safer, and then, you know, hopefully, the other six, I think it was six, ARPA funded, and then the eight provided, RRFBs get up and running soon. And then, one last thing, the, the longtime pastor of St. Rosalima Parish in Northboro, James Jim Houston, passed away on September the 17th. So, he, he'd been the pastor in Northboro of St. Rosalima Parish from June 20th of 1990, for 31 years, retiring in June of, of 2020. uh, from June twentieth of nineteen ninety for thirty-one years, retiring in June of, of twenty-twenty-one. Um, he was actually, and I always, I would talk to him about this because he was born and raised in Elizabeth, New Jersey, so I always had something in common with him to talk about. Um, but, uh, there, there's calling hours from four to seven with a vigil service at seven on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, uh, at Saint Rose of Lima uh, and a, a massive Christian burial on Friday, September twenty-sixth, uh, at eleven AM at Saint Rose of Lima. Uh, and from the obituary in lieu of flowers, um, memorial contributions can be made in his name to the Massachusetts Maritime Academy, um, where he was the like volunteer pastor for, for decades. So it was one of, one of his passions. Um, and that'll conclude my reports.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you so much. Um, so the Dog Park Ceremony is going to be at eleven. The Bollywood concert I'm really looking forward to, so I'm very excited that they're bringing that to town. The assessors, um, preliminary, preliminary results are available online, so I was able to go in and check that if anybody wants to look at them. Uh, the Trails Committee is working on a connection between the Dog Park and the Old Farm Trail. It's become a little bit more complex due to wetlands, but they're sure that they're going to be able to overcome that with Finney's help. There's also a B-Walt advocacy group that has started working towards a feasibility study for the aqueduct path to connect the B-Walt Trail. There is, uh, congratulations to the new firefighter graduates. I'm excited about the, the Borough Economics Trol that's coming up. Um, Community Affairs is, oh, so they're helping with that. And then Health and Human Services, they're doing the Narcan Training, which I'm planning to attend, and they've also got some neat book clubs. In October, they're going to be discussing the anxious generation on October twenty-eighth, so you can register for those online. And I think that concludes my reports. So I like all the events that we've got coming up.
Yeah, they're fun.
Okay, so I just have, um, one thing and that is that the Northborough Cultural Council, the grant period is open until October sixteen. So if anyone has any programs or, um, projects that they'd like to apply, uh, the, it's northboroughculture.org and you'll find information about the grant application. And, um, I'm not going to go into all the organizations and, um, people who put on Apple Fest. There's so many, but, um, it was really great. And thank you very much to everyone, and I guess especially, um, the Apple Fest Committee and the Rotary Club and et cetera, et cetera, and the staff that made that happen. So it was, it was a really great weekend for Northborough. Okay, so, um, next on the agenda is public comment. Anyone?
I waited a long time. I was hoping this was going to be the beginning of the meeting.
You should know better.
I, I did look though, so I was prepared. Lisa Nocelli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, so I'm coming because I have some great concerns. And the great concerns are talking about our municipal assets and how we take care of them. And the fact is that some things have been let go, I think, a little bit longer than should, and I wanted to bring them up because I think they're very important. Um, the first one is, um, we have, and of course, uh, the police station has been my, my pet project. And even though I'm gone from this board, I still feel that there's a lot of things that are down there that are not finished. And, uh, one of which is the steel door that we bought November sixth for seventy-five hundred dollars. It has not been painted. It's a steel door. It's required to have one coat of primer and two coats of finish paint because it will rust and it will rust much sooner than more, more doors do. So at this point, I drove by the police station today, it's still not done. Now, this is September twenty-second. We replaced the door because of rust.
Well, one door is white primer, one does have to get painted, so I don't know.
The back door is gray, has not had primer put on it. So it needs to be done soon because the weather is turning quickly. We've already painted the building in the rain, which we should never have done. I don't even know if we have a warranty on how that paint is going to last, but we should get one. And this door, it, I hope it doesn't go out to bid because we have, I would think, people that can do it.
Yeah, we're painting it, the town.
All right, so, I mean, there's got to be a deadline because, as I say, my heat went on last night. So as soon as the temperature starts going down, the paint begins to be questionable. And the second very important, um, issue I have is that, and I, I alluded to this earlier tonight, when you own a home and you have water damage, you call Servpro immediately, the day you see it. You don't let it sit for days and weeks because of the damage the water creates. And we have a building that has water damage that probably did not come from any above floors.
What, what, where are you talking about?
We're talking about the White Cliffs.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was, um, the dehumidifier, um, spilt. Yeah, it leaked, yeah. And he came in with a shop vac and, good, the, the whole floor needs to be replaced anyway. Would the White Cliffs know about that? And that was literally overnight. So they, they go, they do their tours through the buildings, all of the buildings. They can't live in each house, they're busy, they have a lot of other functions in town. Unfortunately, the dehumidifier leaked and it went all over the, the carpeting, so they had to suck it all up and the, the floor again needs to come, the carpets obviously are going. The floor needs to get rebuilt.
Right, I understand that.
Elegant Banquets.
Yes, and they've been aware of that, but leaving the rug there, which is still wet, is causing more mold to grow. And it should be removed because whether or not you have to rebuild the floor is not the issue. The issue is what it does to the rest of the building. Walking through that, that day that we, the last day with all the three hundred people, before you even walked in the doorway, you knew that something was musty.
It's been musty like that.
Not like that.
Well, since I've been in there. But regardless of the fact, it, the, the weather is starting to get cooler, it's, it's going to be less humid. This is why we need to move forward on moving this building.
And I agree with that, but I really believe you need to rip that carpet out and do it now. You're going to ruin more, it's going to cost more money for them to come and fix if you don't do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll discuss that with them.
Is there a way of at least lifting it and checking?
Oh, it's, I mean, I already know. The, the carpet isn't saturated anymore. He literally kept, I mean, that's why we were able to walk on it, but it's, the floor underneath is all unsettled. So, I mean, everything needs to get...
It's hardwood planks underneath, yeah, of some kind.
Yep.
Good, uh, like original flooring?
No.
No, no, I don't think anyone ever thought that the flooring needed to be preserved.
Right.
I think it was parquet, was it? So, all right, well, those two things, I think, were very much on my mind and I appreciate it.
Is the police station done?
Yes, it is.
So we'd have to go back to the...
No, that wasn't part of the, um, bid, the doors.
So are DPWs doing it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Understood, thanks.
Did you put a timeline in it? Do they have between such and such?
With Apple Fest and everything, um, yeah, they, they've been really busy. That's, I, and it seems like, oh, it's one door, why can't you paint it? But literally, they're going in fifty different directions, so I, I will bring, I did bring it up to them. Doug Stone actually made comment on it and I, I brought that up to him. I think it was the end of last week, but again, they were busy doing, um, Apple Fest.
Well, I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring it up again because I don't know how many other people have gone down to the police station to see, but it's, it's an asset and it's an important asset. I think too that the front doors, I, I don't think they're, um, I don't think they're weather tight. And that was one of the reasons that we replaced them was because you could see through the doors and you can still see through the doors.
All right, I'll check on that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dana, do you see anybody who might want to? No, okay, thank you. All right, future agenda items, anyone have any requests?
I'd like to withdraw my future agenda item on the New York Giants.
What was it?
Really?
Oh.
Any other team you want? Thank you for that. Um, and any other business to come before the board?
What do we have currently for future agenda items?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what do we currently have for future agenda?
It looks like... Ten-six is our first meeting. So we have, um, we marked a possible information session, like tonight for White Cliffs, but I feel like we should wait for, you know, a little bit longer.
Okay.
But what, what's today's date, the twenty-second? Yeah, that would be like a month.
But my two cents, it seems like there's a lot of folks, and I understand being a person who negotiates documents and they're not done till they're done, and it's a chicken egg, it's massive chicken egg problem of like, how do you present something that's close enough to being done that it's not going to spark its own set of rabbit holes?
Yeah.
At the same time, not too late in the process where something that could be made better, it's too late, you know? That's the big chicken egg problem, but setting, recognizing we have that problem, I do think the sooner we can get some version of it.
By next week, I feel like we'll have a lot more secure.
Appreciate it.
Um, and then Saint Obane is coming in on ten-six.
And what's, with a, what's the purpose of that meeting?
That is to show us the new structure, TIF structure that they are...
To come up with a contemplated structure for us to look at?
Yes.
They were thinking about coming today and then they, I think...
Yeah, they were, somebody was too busy.
In October, so.
And then, um, building department fees, you guys had a, a few questions and Bob wasn't available last time, so he's going to come in. Um, ten-seventeen is the deadline to post the, um, town meeting warrant, which is why we said, what, ten-nine? You're going to have your remote meeting?
Yep.
That's remote, right?
Yeah, because we've got an executive session for that, so.
Do you know what time? Six-thirty or six or what?
Is six-thirty...
I like six-thirty.
It is a Thursday.
Gentlemen, time to get home.
Six-thirty would work.
Six-thirty would work.
Yeah, it's a Thursday. Okay, so we'll say six-thirty. Um, and then, God, eleven-three is the special town meeting. That's crazy.
The, um, so it's not on there, we still need goal setting. I don't think we ever did that, or did we?
So I, we could do that ten-nine if you want.
Goal setting? Oh, goal setting, yeah. Um, so, so Stephanie and I discussed, I mean, we knew that this meeting was going to go long, so we, we want to make sure we have at least, you know, a good, solid hour, hour and a half to do that. Um, so I think it will depend on how the agendas evolve. Are you, if, if you're okay with that?
Totally, just in here on future agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. We haven't forgotten.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, actually don't have a strong preference of when we do it. It's just I'm thinking of the things that are future agenda items more, I just remember it.
And then, um, we said we'd have one more public information session, so we have the ten-six meeting, the ten-nine meeting.
Um... It does, it doesn't have to be an official...
Oh, maybe.
Labeled as that. We always take public comment. I mean, I, do we really need to get Elegant Banquets back here?
No, 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 because at that point, I think I'll know more on the lease and maybe will, I'll already have it posted online, so people can... Ten-six, maybe, yeah.
Just an idea popped in my mind. Would, would you mind asking, um, Mr. Royce if he'd just be willing to, so he doesn't have to drive, it's a long drive.
Like remote in?
Remote in.
Yeah.
The only reason I'm thinking is I know that there's possibly some who would have liked to have come today but are having a holiday and we want them to have the same opportunity, I think.
Yeah, and they said they would.
If we can ask him if he'd be willing, I don't, I don't want to make him drive up again.
No, I know, it's three and a half hours.
That would be, uh, fair.
Do we, do we have a, a defined date in which we've agreed to have the negotiation complete with Elegant Banquets?
Um, yeah, like ASAP because I think we have, um, two weeks before we have to post the warrant and, I mean, of course, we'd have to have all of our ducks in a row for...
Right, and I'm guessing the question is like, um, are we going to need executive session for that at some point? Or, I mean, I feel like we're, I feel like we're pretty close based on the conversations.
Oh, we're very close, yeah.
The devil's in the details, but I feel like we're, and I think...
That'd be something on ten-nine.
Yeah, you mentioned ten-nine, which would be a quick public meeting to close the warrant and you wanted executive session for collective bargaining, so...
Maybe the same.
Just like an update where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on ten-nine, have, uh, the public information session or? I think we should...
No, the executive session in order to make sure we're looking at the lease agreement.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, absolutely.
And I would give Elegant Banquets that, say, hey, let's get this in, like what we consider close to final negotiated state, so we can act with urgency and get their timeline and not add any more risk within our control. Um, so I think if we take that approach, it could work.
Okay, but I do want to advertise another public information session. So what date is that?
The next, uh, would be on the sixth, I believe.
Ten-six, okay, I'll do it on ten-six. We were going to do it on ten-six anyway.
Yeah, and the ten-nine just affords us executive session to be able to do anything we need to do that, since, since we're together then as well.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
And then, um, the, the other thing of interest to me and it gets more my goal setting is, um, once the natural timeline in which we'll be with the, um, with Leo and tax assessing conversations.
Oh, yeah, when do we set the, um...
Tax rate?
Tax rate.
Well, that's, that's, um, what I said, that we are already in final certification, so basically he's posting the values, Lee, and then, um, oh, shoot, I wish Jason was here. It'll probably be, I'd say, in November.
It usually is November.
Yes.
I think it's November typically.
Right, so...
But do you want, do you want discussion before we set the tax rate or do you want it as part of?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to get the discussion earlier rather than later just in terms of what I put on my, on my, on my goals.
Yeah.
I mean, a good piece, I mean, yes, we, we definitely want a good discussion about it, but I know like, yeah, the last November meeting when we had Lee here, there were a lot of questions about dual tax rate or single tax rate, so...
From the public, you're saying, right?
Well, from the board members at the time and stuff like that, so there, there was some discussion there. It's kind of like maybe, I don't know, I guess you can't put a video in the agenda packet, but...
I mean, I think, so there'd be...
I watched that, by the way.
Me too. Yeah, yeah, I actually thought, yeah, but I think there's discussion on, on that we could obviously have and there's discussion on valuation methodology and some of the commercial properties I'd like to get a better understanding on.
Okay, I'm going to ask Lee.
Yeah.
Why residential's gone up in commercial?
Well, I mean, I just have, like Saint Caban is a perfect example. It's a taxpayer in Northborough that in two thousand and thirteen paid three hundred and nine thousand dollars and two thousand and twenty-five pays three hundred and six thousand dollars that's coming to us for a TIF. So I, I, and we just worked with them to give them a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, so, so it's things like that. Like, like that seems like it hasn't gone up at the same rate as Jonathan Race House, Three Little Lab.
As a layperson, it's because of the increase in residential values versus the sort of recession in commercial industrial.
Is there a recession?
I mean...
Well, yeah, there's a lot of empty commercial space. It's not, it's not worth what it used to be before the pandemic.
Well, that's a discussion I'd have, so I think some of these sub-markets, like logistics space have actually been very hot and they're, and like, so when you look at commercials...
It's not necessarily across the board.
Yeah, so I, that's a better, for me to better understand that, I think would be a good, rich dialogue to understand. And so I don't want to put that off for a year if I'm missing it by a, a day.
Oh, it's a good point.
And then I would just say at some point after special town meeting, maybe even into the new year, um, just somewhere in the agenda to start discussion around for West Main and then the soon-to-be old fire station.
Right after this is done, that's my baby.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Getting rid of that.
Yep.
Well, not get rid of it, but yes, get rid of it, but that's something nice.
Right, yes, we're going to make something wonderful. All right, um, okay, so I think I have all my notes. Okay. All right, then, next item on the agenda would be motion to adjourn. Anyone want to do that?
So moved.
Second?